Thank you. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, December 8, 2020. The board meeting was called to order today at 4:30 PM with the board going directly into executive session under Oregon revised statutes 196.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations. This executive session was announced in advance on Friday, December 4, 2020, both by listing it on the agenda and posting it online. Executive sessions are not open to the public. It's now 5 o'clock and we are reconvening our meeting with public session, which is work session. The regular business session will begin at 6:00 PM. At the beginning of the business session, we will be reading an important land acknowledgement. We'll start with board attendance once again. We took attendance in the executive session, but we'll still need to take it for this public meeting. I'll be calling your name. Please acknowledge your presence. Vice Chair Bethel.
Here.
Thank you. Director Goss. Director Goss. Right, we'll wait for Director Goss to join us. Director Kylo.
Here.
Director Hein.
Here.
Director Blasi. And Director Leport will be joining us at 6:00. He had indicated earlier. And I'm Satya Chandragiri. I'm also present. So Director Goss, are you there? Alice, if you don't mind, if Director Goss joins us, will you let us know?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. With that, I'm going to turn this portion of the work session, a very important work session, over to Superintendent Perry and her team. Thank you very much. Superintendent Perry, it's all yours.
Good evening, Chair Shondre Giri, Director Vice Chair Bethel, members of the board. It's great to have an opportunity to talk to you about our key performance metrics. You may remember that we did really work hard to shift our performance metrics to show you health of the system over time and a place in time when students were in the system. As we were gearing up to think about how do we redo our results policy, which is a fairly outdated policy that you have and one that's important that you think about as a board of how do you monitor the health of the district and what are the key things you want to monitor? So we have taken the key performance indicators from previously and we have updated them for this unique place in time. And what I really hope you can think about is what are the things you want to monitor, especially moving forward beyond COVID, so that at some point in the future we can get the results policy revised. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our two assistant superintendents who are prepared to walk you through this session of the work session tonight. So I'm not sure who's starting, but either Dr. Sprouls or Dr. Udo Senata, take over.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry. Dr. Udo Senata, we may need to have a different view on those slides.
Yeah, I apologize. Something is, just give me a second to adjust. I apologize. I'll stop sharing and.
As you're doing that, let me just talk a little bit. So first of all, Chair Shondre Giri and board members, we are excited to be able to talk with you a little bit about our academic indicators today because this is an ongoing discussion that we hope to bring back to the board each month as a touch point for how we are meeting the needs of our students. Hopefully you'll see that with our KPIs that we're introducing, last year we were focused primarily on academic measures and several of them had the culmination of a summative measure at the end of the year. And as you know, the end of the year didn't allow for us to use summative measures. And so we tried to really think deeply, how could we give an idea of the health of our overall system to our community and to our school board members throughout this year? So the presentation that Dr. Udo Senata and I are going to do today is more of an overview of what the KPIs look like instead of a deep dive into each individual KPI. We will have that opportunity to go deep at subsequent board meetings coming up. There we go. But that's not what we're hoping to accomplish today. So since we only have an hour together, what we're hoping is that if you have questions about the indicators or about some of the data that we're going to be talking about, Director Bethel has offered to kind of be a moderator for us in the discussion. And so if you can enter those into the chat, that also gives us the ability to capture those afterward. And if we're not able to hit all of your questions just in the next hour, we will get back to you with answers to those questions in writing in the next few days. So Director Bethel, are you still, does that still sound okay with you?
Yes, and I'm here. I apologize. If I keep my video on, you sound like you're like 10 words in a paragraph. So I'm here.
Okay, good. And can you still see the chat, Director Bethel?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Okay, Dr. Udo Senata, are you going to kick us off here?
Thanks, Dr. Sprouls. I apologize for the technical difficulties adjusting to a new computer and monitor. So good evening, Chair Shondre Giri and Directors of the Board and Superintendent Perry. Like Superintendent Perry mentioned and Dr. Sprouls mentioned, the KPIs really are a way for us to monitor indicators that are indicative of the health of our students' academic achievement. But also, one thing that we changed this year is it's also indicative of some of the markers that we think are important for their personal growth as well and well-being. And so we look at this and what I want you to keep in mind is the indicators that we use, they're not absolutes. So one does not mean, so one indicator does not mean that a student is for sure going to not pass high school if they don't meet the ninth grade metric. But instead, what it is, it's a way just to keep track on vitals, the same way that we do with our own personal health. You go to the doctor, you get a checkup. They check your blood pressure, your pulse, your cholesterol, and those are all indicators for what you should do to adjust your lifestyle. And they're also marks of health. Same thing with our KPIs. And so what's really important is we look at these, one, to give us feedback on how we're doing instructionally, but also on how to identify where we need to intervene and provide interventions or adjustments to curriculum, et cetera. All right, and there we go. So last year, the indicators, as Dr. Sprouls suggested or shared earlier, were focused on key academic indicators. And we do this as well this year, but our KPIs, if you look on the bottom, and we'll get into more detail about this later, we organized it by level and then inserted the academic indicators as a metric within each level. So we have elementary success, middle school success, and high school success. And then we have three very important indicators that help us identify the health of a school and school culture and students' well-being. But they're also key components of our Student Investment Act or SIA plan. If you look at the graphic right here, which our communications department has done an outstanding job on, you see that our KPIs are organized around this idea of equity in student outcomes. All of our other indicators here, improving instruction, effective operations, inclusive cultures and community, leadership development, implementation of data and systems is consistent with last year, with the exception on the left, which I want to call your attention to, which is we will develop the knowledge, will, and skill of our leaders to interrupt systems of oppression. In the past, it was that we will develop the knowledge, will, and skill of our leaders to lead the buildings or to lead students. And so this is an important one for us as we move forward to creating more inclusive and welcoming schools. And Dr. Sprouls?
Yeah, so just as a really quick reflection to call us back to where we were last year, this is just a snapshot of our KPIs last year. And you can see that they were largely focused on academic areas with the exception of attendance. We also, and Ethan mentioned this a little bit, these KPIs are indicators of success later in the system. And I think it's important for us to realize kindergarten attendance is still one of the strongest predictors of high school graduation rates. Being able to read at grade level by the fifth grade is also an indicator. Not failing a math class in middle school is one of our strongest indicators of high school graduation rates. And then being on track your freshman year, so passing the classes you need to pass and getting the credits is another one. So we have some of those same metrics reflected in our new KPIs, but we've kind of expanded them partially, honestly, based on advice from board and the board members around providing a more holistic measure. So the next slide shows, this is just a summary of where we were. We also want to acknowledge and call out that we want to measure Spanish as an early literacy measure. We are a unique district that about 20% of our students qualify for English language services and most of them are Spanish speakers. So our kids come to us with a linguistic asset already. They come speaking another language other than English in a lot of cases. So to be able to build on that and celebrate that as an asset, we believe is really important. So that's why we wanted to measure, are our kids continuing to learn in Spanish as well as they're learning in English? We feel like that's a strong indicator for our system. So this year, as I mentioned a little bit in the introduction, we had some big impacts to our KPIs. Our summative assessments were largely suspended. And that's our, when we talk about things like the ALPA, the English Language Proficiency Assessment, or we talk about things like the SBAK, the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium, those are big summative tests that are given usually once a year in most states. And we weren't able to give any of those. And most of our KPIs were tied to benchmarks assessments with those. We've also learned that what was important to measure pre-COVID may be different now. So maybe notions of engagement is a different measure now than it was when we're actually seeing our students every day. And this is something, and Superintendent Perry mentioned this a little bit, but we may want to revisit these moving forward. So we wanted to create kind of malleable indicators that could adjust. And so that's why we went to elementary, middle, and high school success as a general indicator. Next year, we might decide, instead of focus on language and literacy at the elementary, we might want to focus on math and science. Or we might want to focus on an engineering thing or something else. And so this provides us with the ability to change the focus depending on what our community wants us to be able to report. And Director Bethel, I wonder if this would be a good time for us to see if there's any questions that we could answer?
There is. Actually, there's two, and I was just typing one in there.
Okay.
So I think there's more than that. Dr. Shondre Giri wants to know, will the data dashboard be accessible by the community as data to the community so that we can have data-driven equitable advocacy by organizations and the community?
Yes and no. It kind of depends on the level, Dr. Shondre Giri, because the dashboards that we're going to show you today, we need to make sure that there is an identifiable information within those dashboards on down to the student level. But we can share the accessible data that we already have with our assessments at, like with ODE, for instance, we have a set of assessments with them.
And Bob would say that as long as it's the aggregate data, we could move in that direction. We'd want to think about how we would make those accessible.
Yeah.
Director Blasi would like to know, how is Title funding impacted by not being able to perform smarter balanced testing?
Good question, Director Blasi. And we don't exactly have an answer to that yet. Unfortunately, Oregon Department of Education has put in a waiver to be able to suspend a lot of the tests that are tied to, for, just so everyone understands, Title I is a federally funded source directed specifically for students living in poverty. And we get a chunk of resources for our families based on that. And to be able to get that, you need to be able to complete a certain set of assessments, Smarter Balance being one of them. So ODE has put in a waiver to the Department of Ed to be able to waive some of those requirements. But it hasn't been decided yet what that will look like. We will meet the metrics we need to, to be able to qualify for those funds. We just don't know what that will look like yet.
Thank you.
And then in regards to the measuring of the pre-COVID and going forward, as you said, Superintendent Perry said that we may revisit those. What does that look like? How will that be determined? This is my question, sorry.
I think we would probably advocate with you that we did bring it forward. But one of the things we've discussed is having little bits of KPI updates at board meetings so you could do a deep dive into them so that then you can really, as a group, decide, are these the right metrics that you want to monitor in the boardroom? And then from there, then it goes into the, it could be taken into the results policy.
Thank you. And then Director Shondre Giri is asking, is there a way to predict how much of the learning loss can be expected for different groups?
Yeah, you should begin seeing that as we begin sharing updated data each month. And there is also, yeah, and it's all disaggregated. The thing we haven't talked about here is what's really important is that you disaggregate data and that you look at it based on different groups of students.
Yeah, and one thing that I would add is at this stage in the year, and given that comprehensive distance learning was very new to our organization in September, is our numbers are going to look different than last year. And we're looking at them not necessarily as a predictor at this point as much as we are indicators that we're using to ask questions of inquiry that will help us adjust our practices in CDL.
I might add, Dr. Shondre Giri, we're going to get to a spot here where we're going to share dashboards with the school board, which will allow you to be able to, for instance, compare how are our students who are learning English in middle school, what are their grades like now compared to where they were last year? And I think what you're going to find is a lot of the concerns that we had going into CDL are starting to show up, that we have achievement gaps. And I don't think there's any other way to say that. So that helps us direct dollars to be able to know who to support, to be able to reach out to families in proactive ways. But I think you'll see some of that in a minute in the presentation.
Will the presentation, well, I'll just ask and then you can tell me if it's shown later. His last question is, in short, will the data dashboard have kind of, what he says cradle to grave, but like the entire career education existence of a student available for parents to view progress and monitor and be engaging where they feel appropriate?
Director Bethel, I think I might have missed a little bit of the middle of, was it a question, is it a comprehensive dashboard? Was that kind of the question?
I think so.
Okay. Yes and no, I guess would be my answer to that. Remember, the way that we assess growth and learning for a kindergartner or a first grader is very different than we would assess it for a junior or senior. So the actual things that we use to monitor progress are different. But the dashboard that we show you has elementary, middle school, and high school data points in there that I think do a nice job of monitoring the health of our system. And that's just the academic side. We also have the panorama side as well.
Thank you. There's no further questions.
Thank you. Let's see, is this one? Dr. Udo Senata, is this you?
It's me. Give me just a moment to get back onto the presentation. So as we stated earlier, as we stated earlier, here are the areas that are KPIs for this year. So we disaggregated them again by level, elementary, middle, and high school success. And within those, you will see benchmarks and markers for each of those that we'll outline momentarily on the next slide. Again, we also have universal markers that we're looking, that are tied to our student engagement, that are SIA, and also tied to our strategic planning as well. And I think that's important to call that out because we want to make sure that the work that we're doing at the 30,000-foot level in terms of planning and how we're allocating resources and setting the vision ties into our strategic plan and also ties into our KPIs. And these three areas on the bottom three bullets, we found to be some that were essential to helping students grow. So Dr. Sprouls, will you take us through our elementary success? And then I'll walk us through our middle school and high school success.
Yeah, of course. So for one of the, you'll probably remember back with our Student Success Act and our Student Investment Account dollars, a big focus at the elementary level this year was around language and literacy. And language is providing kids the skills to be able to learn English language skills. And then literacy is reading and writing. And so how do they apply those skills in their reading and writing? The key benchmark to be able to do that is can a student read fluently at the second grade? Fluency is oftentimes misunderstood as just fast. Can a kid just read, you know, quickly enough? And it's really reading fast enough with understanding and with inflection to be able to understand the intent of the passage. So second grade reading fluency is an important thing. And we all know this, that if you're a beginning reader and you're sounding out each word in a sentence, it's really hard to put that sentence together to make meaning. So that's the idea of why second grade fluency is important. And again, we're calling out Spanish and English as two important measures. Another reason why we settled on this one, and this is something just for the school board to know, to be able to give you feedback throughout the year, obviously, the assessment needs to be given throughout the year. We can't just focus on end-of-the-year assessments that come back in August if what we're trying to do is make changes this year. So we've also tried to choose what are called formative and interim assessments, which are given more frequently. So our CBMs are given across our district three times a year. So it gives us an opportunity to see growth in one year, which is particularly important during CDL. The other thing we've decided to focus on at elementary is our elementary attendance rates. And I wish we had a way to measure attendance and engagement. It's a little bit more nuanced to measure engagement. But we think it's important to be able to measure attendance, particularly at the elementary level, because if students aren't logging in, that we need to figure out what barrier there is to that. So we've been monitoring that closely from the very start. And then I'll let Dr. Udo Senata talk about middle school and high school.
Thank you. As you all know, middle school is a time when there is a lot of social and emotional growth for students, a lot of matriculation occurring for students. And everybody in the middle school level normally goes at their own rate. But one academic measure that we have found to be a really strong indicator for student success at the high school level has been with successfully completing math courses and English language arts. And so for that reason, our middle school KPI is to look really closely at our math achievement and really look really closely at our English language arts achievement. Math achievement is what props up a student's ability to be prepared for Algebra I. And Algebra I is one of the, one of the classes that matriculates to be a key indicator for high school success. And so we want to make sure that our students have a strong mathematical foundation going into the high school. And if they don't, and if they've shown to have failed or even received a D in the class, that will probably warrant some intervention going into high school. But it also reduces the probability that a student's going to graduate on time. So we want to make sure that doubling down on math supports is a priority at the middle school level. And the same goes for English language arts as well. We want to make sure that students are engaging, that they're getting a strong foundation to prop them up for success in high school. At the high school level, and I'm going to show my bias here. I was a high school principal for seven years and an administrator for nine years. Some of the indicators that we look at at the beginning of the year and continue to monitor and track throughout the course of the year is that ninth grade on track. And what ninth grade on track, and our metric looks a little bit different from the state, ninth grade on track for the state means that a student is earning enough credits to earn 24 credits at the end of their four years for a four-year cohort. That's six credits a year. In our system, students get eight attempts per year. We go one over on that. And we also make sure that for high school success on track, or ninth grade on track, that students also pass algebra class and their language arts class. And so what you'll see in our metrics is that our numbers for ninth grade on track are lower than what our state metrics would show for ninth grade on track if you're to look at our state report card. And that's because we know that those classes are essential to students moving into their 10th and 11th grade year without having to take intervention classes. And also, we know that when a student gets success at algebra and language arts, it builds their self-efficacy and ability to have success for their core classes beyond that. Also, high school completion rates. Now, this is one of the markers that we have that are posthumous, right? That are mortality data, because there's not anything we can do after the fact to go back and change that. But it does show us how we've been doing from a longitudinal standpoint. So over the years, our high school completion rates for our four-year and five-year cohort continuing to rise. And they have been, especially for schools that have struggled in the past with graduation rates. We're seeing really good indicators for that at our schools. And so I know that you all have been asking a lot about dashboards. And so what we want to do right now is have Dr. Sprouls walk you through what the dashboard looks like. And so I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Hold on, just hold on one second, Ethan. We haven't gotten to our other, our back three.
Oh, whoops. I apologize. I'm getting a little ahead of ourselves because we're really impressed with this dashboard. Craig, can you start us with this slide?
Yes, I can. So part of what we heard from the school board was that we needed a holistic way to be able to measure things other than just academics because we know there's a lot of things that impact a student's ability to be successful in the classroom. And a lot of those things happen outside the classroom and that aren't necessarily measured with a pure academic measure. So these three additional measures, community engagement and empowerment, our equity, diversity, and inclusion work, and social emotional support, we believe are equally important to be able to measure the health of our overall system. And it's something that we take really seriously. So with the community engagement and empowerment, we will be doing a community survey with our parents and stakeholders to get feedback from them on how does communication work for them? Sometimes when we attempt to just send things out and without a feedback loop on whether that's working or not, it doesn't work for folks. And we learned a lot about community engagement and empowerment, honestly, through the SIA work and the way we can be better listeners and lean into conversations. And so that's that measure. The next one for EDI, we're going to complete a district-wide equity audit. And that's going to be working with Dr. Khalifa to be able to provide us, it's focused primarily on systems and structures, on how we can create more anti-racist, anti-oppressive system and structures to be able to welcome all kids. So all kids have a sense of belonging in our school. All kids are known. All kids are loved in that. All kids, we celebrate their strengths in our classrooms and in our schools. So part of that will also be the possibility of a well-being metric. We put it on there as a 21-22 metric because that's something we'd like the school board to think about on how we would be able to measure student well-being. For me, that means things like positive affect and it means things like engagement, relationships, meaningful work, having a sense of efficacy. And we have some ways that we could propose to measure that, partially in our panorama data as well. So then for social emotional supports, the Panorama survey is given twice a year. And then we also will give the student health survey. And Ethan, do you want to come? And Ethan, do you want to come, do you want to talk a little bit about the student health survey? Because I know you know it really well.
Absolutely. I'll talk about both. So the panorama survey is important because it's a survey that we give multiple times a year. And it gives us really valuable information on students' social emotional health and also the types of connections and relationships they have at school, which I think ties into the sense of welcoming, sense of belonging and well-being that we're really trying to emphasize and improve in our buildings. The student health survey, this was a survey formerly known as the Healthy Teen Survey. This is a survey that's administered every two years throughout the state. And in, within the surveys, there's, there's questions, a variety of questions about a student's personal choices, their health, and their overall well-being. And as for buildings, principals, and administrators, we use this as indicators to shape our school culture. We use it as, as ways to implement initiatives or to build partnerships with community agencies to make sure that students' emotional health and needs, needs are being met. And we also use it as a way to, to reframe how we're supporting students, especially students who especially students who feel like they have a sense of disconnection to schools. And so what we really want to do is make sure that students' needs are being met and that they have a strong sense of connectivity and ownership in the building that they, where they get their education and spend a lot of their time.
So before we jump into the dashboards, Director Bethel, would you like to, could we answer some questions that might be popping up?
Yes. So just real quick, Director Blassey says, I think it's great that we have added algebra and LA indicators. And then I'm going to let Dr. Sean Dragiri jump in and ask his third question, because I unfortunately was unable to understand how to deliver it. And then we have a few after that.
Okay.
Thank you. The question I have is for different communities. Is there a way for us to understand from what I call creative to career pathways? That way, we as community members know there's an uninterrupted pipeline either for, you know, the kind of jobs that is really going to be there, like computers, healthcare, et cetera. Parents can get them into STEM education sooner or math education sooner. Because as an immigrant parent, sometimes it's hard to understand how all this fits in. Then I see, when I look at the data, I see such a wide gap by the time they reach high school. For example, the black students in our community, you know, there's such a wide gap in terms of choosing high-quality education like AP or IB. So if their parents had known sooner, perhaps they could have guided them into the right courses, which would have helped them fit into that. And then when it comes to job opportunities, they lose out. Then there is lack of representation of, say, black or Latinx or women in, say, for example, computer science. So, and healthcare and various fields. So keeping that opportunities and then connecting different communities to that early on is how can we use the data to educate our communities? Am I making sense?
Yeah, and I think what I would say is you as a board have to decide which, are there some key pieces that are missing? Or do you just want more information in the boardroom? Because you could have a report on what are you doing to, you know, what is the rate of student enrollment in career technical education by subgroup, and we could tell you that. And we could then tell you what is our recruiting efforts and how have we increased by thousands of kids in career technical ed? How are we pushing that into middle school? You could also know about our equal opportunity schools and how that helps kids get into AP and IB. So I guess what I would say is, as a board, decide is, we measure that and care a lot about that. Is that something you want to do as a board? Or do you want to start with getting some information about what we are doing, what, what's our baseline of where we are? Because that isn't quite what we came prepared for tonight.
But, and then one thing I just wanted to add, Superintendent Perry, she mentioned equal opportunity schools. I meet routinely with, with programs that we have partnerships with. One is Mesa out of the University of Portland, or Portland State University, which is focused on, on targeting our minority students who, to be engaged in STEM, the STEM field. And, and it's, it's an after-school program that's still running in our middle schools and high schools. We also have the Willamette Academy, which gives non-traditional college, or prospective college students an opportunity to have rigorous college experiences during the summer and also props them up to have access to the University, Willamette University with the reduced, with the reduced financial burden. We have our Avid programs. And we have, we're also working on expanding our opportunities and making sure that families know that we're expanding our opportunities for students to access Chomeka to Community College. So those efforts are being done, like Superintendent Perry shared. We just would, would need to know if that's something that the board wants us to factor as an indicator for next year.
Director Bethel, were there other questions that we could entertain before we get into our dashboards, which we're very excited to share?
Yes, please. And I'll be quick there. Questions for me? How, how those, both of those surveys are administered? And in what format and what times of the year? And if, and this is going to be my parent question, if parents are notified that that's coming down to their students so they can engage. And then also, who, who writes those surveys? Is it the district or is it other parties that we're just pushing through our system?
That's a really good question. So the Healthy Teen Survey is administered every other year through, I believe it's the Oregon Health Authority. And they are, they are the authors of that, of that survey. It's an extensive survey that asks several questions about the student's personal health and their experiences and their, and their perceptions of school and the perceptions of theirselves. And it's, what we do is schools are obligated to send a letter out to families saying that we are participating in the Healthy Teen Survey and the window in which students will be participating in. And then parents have an opportunity to opt out if their child participating in that survey, if they wish, don't wish for them to take that survey. Historically, it's been a pencil and paper survey. However, I don't know if the format's changing based on us being incomprehensive distance learning almost statewide. So that's something we can look into.
Yeah, I think on the panorama survey, first of all, we've kind of grown in how we're giving it. It's all, it's given to students, parents, also staff. So you have three points. And what I think might be really good is for us to, if the board desires, to bring that into the boardroom to say, here's what we give, here's what it measures, so you can see the breadth of what it measures and kind of the times of year we give it. Because then wait, you could have a thorough presentation on it. The, we don't write the questions. There's a question bank, so we choose the questions that were, that are for the areas we want to measure from the question bank. So it's a, they write the questions, but we help choose because they have thousands of questions. The thing that comes with panorama is also what's called a playbook. So the teachers and buildings can, and schools can develop strategies for increasing some of the items we measure, like student-teacher relationships or grit or sense of belonging, those sorts of things. So if it's the will of the board, we would love to come in with a, you know, comprehensive presentation on panorama.
Fantastic. And then Director Blassey just made a comment, and I, if she can pop in here, so that way it's, she can clarify it, that would be great.
There was some conversation a couple of minutes ago about maybe asking for different types of data and things. And my, my comment was just that I'd like to first give the superintendent and staff the opportunity to share more about what they are collecting and why. And, and, you know, how that, how that information will be used so that we can make informed decisions before we start asking for additional data and metrics and reports. I, I just don't think we have enough information yet to start asking. We don't know yet what's being collected and how it's earned. And so it was just a, just a thought that before we move to additional requests, maybe we just have a better understanding of what the new metrics are and what they're based on.
Thank you. And then just real quick, there's a statement. I'm sorry, my eyeballs are, I'm not sure who made it because it's so tiny. The Student Health Survey will be available later this year. Just kidding, Ethan.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, it'll be made available online this year. I apologize.
And just as a little forecasting, for January, what we're going to propose is a look at our socio-emotional supports. So we could give a pretty thorough explanation of panorama in about a month, if that's what the board would like us to do. That's what we're going to propose here in just a minute. So wondering if I could share my screen now to walk through the dashboards and, and again, there's a lot here. So it's not that we are thinking that this will that this is going to answer a bunch of questions right now, because there's a lot of numbers here. So I'm, I'm hoping that what you take this as is just kind of a little bit to wet your whistle. And then you can explore these and answer questions as they come up, and we can help you navigate it a little bit. So in the chat, I put right up here at the top where it says spark.salekize.k12.or.us. And I dropped it in the chat as well. That's the best way to be able to get to this. When you log in, you're going to need to log in with your school district credentials. So for me, that is sprouls underscore Craig at salekize.k12.or.us. And so you'll need to use that exact same authentication to be able to get into your dashboard. You will have a dropdown screen at the top right here, just like that I have on that says board. If you click on that and go down to student data, what we have migrated in your suite right now are these five dashboards. Dr. Sean Dragiri, just as a real point, I'm not going to dive into this one. But this student program participation, if you're interested in students participating in CTE, broken down by disaggregated data and demographic, that's where you should dive into that one. But I'm going to use this one, this district-wide mark comparison, and mark is just a way to say grades. And this is, and I realized at first it's a little overwhelming, but it's actually relatively simple. This is a year-by-year comparison dashboard. So in group one here, I'm going to say, let's just say we want to compare 2021, which is our current year, quarter one, let's say we want to compare grades six, seven, and eight. And we want to do that only for our English Language Learner students. So I want to compare that. So you can see the bubbles right there, and I'll, and I'll walk through that in just a minute. I want to compare that to last year. What you're going to notice, and this is what you'll find with data. We weren't on a quarter system last year. Remember, we were on a semester system. So when you go to the grading period, I'm going to compare it to a semester, because remember, students completed fewer courses. But they got more credits for the courses they did complete in the first quarter. So the grading period here says first semester nineteen twenty. I want to compare our middle school kids, so I'm going six, seven, and eight, pushing apply. And I want to compare our students who qualify for English Language Services. And so those are our ELLs. So this is a dashboard that really tells us a picture about what we need to think about in supports. So you can see in 2021 in CDL, at the end of first quarter, forty percent of our students who qualify for English Language Services received at least one failing grade. Last year, only thirteen percent of those same students at the end of semester one received a failing grade. So this tells us something about the achievement gap that we, that Dr. Sean Dragiri, we were just talking about. This gives us some information about what's the achievement gap look like. If we want to drill down even more, I can go into subject. And so let's just, let's just think about math. So I'm going to go into subject, and I'm going to explore math, because I'm interested to see what the difference looks like for that. So you can see in math, thirty-five percent of our ELLs received an F, twenty percent received a D. So fifty-five percent received a D or F in comprehensive distance learning. Versus last year, only fifteen percent of students received an F at the end of their first semester class in math, and twenty-one percent of kids received a D. So what is that? Thirty-six percent overall. So this tells us, it can tell us lots of things. It's important to remember, these dashboards don't necessarily lead to the conclusions that we think they do. But it does tell us about resources needed this year, right now, to be able to support students. And so I know Director Beyondi met with his middle school administrative team just last week and looked exactly at this dashboard to say, how can we intervene right now for students who qualify for EL services in their math classes? You probably also remember that one of our goals with our student investment account was to increase the number of teachers and support for students in middle school math. And so that's what they're bringing to bear right now, to be able to see, can we correct this course? Can we get in front of this now as a marker before it becomes a long-term indicator? Dr. Udosan Atam mentioned this a little bit, but one of the things that gives us pause, and honestly is very concerning, is that we know that if a student receives an F in a middle school math class, only thirteen percent of those students traditionally walk across the stage in four years of high school. So this is a very, traditionally, a very, very strong indicator of success in high school. And because it sets you on a path where you may fail Algebra I, and then you need to get credit retrieval to be able to stay on track. So there's lots of information here. You can break it down by ethnicity as well. You could break it down by gender, so you can look at boys versus girls. We do have data in here for six, seven, but all the way up. So let's just say one of the board members is particularly interested in how do kids do in science? Example, in their eleventh grade year, you can, you can dig into that data here to be able to see that. So it can answer a lot of questions that, that we pose. But we just have to be careful about drawing too many conclusions about the reasons for. That's what, I think we always need to use data as a starting point in a conversation, not necessarily a concluding point. Because it's just one data point overall. And then I'll just briefly, yeah, I'm sorry, Kristi, I'm talking fast.
That's okay. I just wanted to go on to say, from, you know, there's then always questions about how, how do you resource, right? So Craig has talked about the SIA. We also know that there will be gaps in learning. And so we're really, you know, saving every title one penny right now in order to think about what does an extended school year look like? What does summer look like? Are there places we could plug in more dollars in order to get more people? And as we're thinking about limited in-person, this really tells us also where to really start as we're thinking about expanding limited in-person again, and when we begin to be able to do that. So, and same with when McNary did their blitz with grading or with grades before the end of the first semester. Principal Jespersen and his team did exactly this. They pulled data. They shifted resources in teacher time and intervened in the moment. So the data use in an on-demand way can really help us shift the system rather than waiting till the summative. So that's what the dashboards have been helpful for us with. And again, it really tells a story. As we think about the governor's budget that just came out and how we need to advocate for the right amount of dollars for schools and, and also in terms of what I'm calling COVID recovery for kids. There's lots of recovery out there for COVID, but if we really think about academic, social, emotional recovery for kids, this sort of data will help us with that state-level advocacy as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry. And I just wanted to flash up one other dashboard here, and then I'm hoping that you will take some time and explore them, because there's a lot of data here. This is our By the Numbers dashboard, which gives information that's filtered by a lot of disaggregated data sources about all kinds of things. And so this is our student demographics. We oftentimes get questions about, you know, how, what's the percentage of students who identify as Hispanic, Latinx? And so this shows that we have seventeen thousand nine hundred ninety students that that fit into that category, shows our overall, our pre-K numbers. Shows our overall, our pre-K numbers as well, our numbers of students receiving free and reduced lunches, our numbers to students who qualify for special education services, number of avid participants. So this, if you ever have a community member ask a question about, you know, like what, what, what is going on with this program or that program, or what's the representation look like at CTE? We have our CTE programs right here. You can filter by all of the things. So if you want to know how many girls are in CTE programs, well, let's ask that question. So here we go. We're going to say female. We're going to apply that. And it'll spin a little while because it has to go through every single one of these and do it by. So you can see that fifty-five percent of our students in our CTE program identify as girls. Currently that the kids that we're serving, you can see that twenty-two percent of them are in an AP or IB class. You can also see up here up top that how they're broken out by, I don't know why mine won't go all the way to the top. How they're broken out by other categories. You can also ask questions about GPA. So if you wanted to see like, are, is GPA a factor on who gets, on who takes CTE classes? That question can be answered in a dashboard like this. So I would just kind of encourage you to bring an inquisitive spirit to the dashboards. There's lots and lots of questions that can be answered and can be asked in the dashboards. And but if there's other questions as well that aren't asked in this, or you need some help navigating them, that's where Dr. Udo Sanata and I can, can really help do that. So that was a, that was quick. I apologize.
He was trying to be mindful of our six o'clock start time.
Director Blasi, did you have a question? I thought I saw your hand.
Yeah, sorry, I was waving. Sorry, just real quick. So it's so great that, you know, McNary took a look at the data and moved resources and made, made a significant impact. Do you have any plans to have the other schools do that? And I know sometimes data can be challenging and plan, plans for them to do that and then help them better understand the data if they need that help.
I actually think that across all of our high schools, they did a data dive around grades. McNary kind of launched and then the others were right behind. I keep bringing them up because they were the story. And our school leaders are, and many of our educators are clamoring for limited in person because they know that that helps change the engagement concerns and the, and the achievement gap that we're seeing. So they all have access to the data and, and work kind of across all schools to really take a look at it. Just like Director Beyondi did with all his middle school principals and leaders around the grades at middle school. So thank you for asking that.
Yeah. Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I really appreciate that we're looking at how we might be able to address some of the issues later through some cost savings and things like that. Are you going to be talking about, and maybe later tonight, when you give an update? But ideas for, for families, you know, who are, who are struggling? I don't know, you know, I know it's so challenging, but ideas for families to, when they identify when maybe a child is getting behind in a math class in middle school and what, what to do. I get asked that a lot and I just, I don't know what to, I don't know how to answer that.
Yeah, the, and part is just that continual outreach with their school, which is, but it's really hard when you are working. You don't, or you don't know how to help your kid. And so we're just trying to navigate them kind of one at a time as they're coming in through schools. And then again, the ability to do the limited in person, or we're also doing still some, there wouldn't be called home visits because we don't, aren't letting people go in homes. But we are having a number of our high school graduation coaches do checks in with students to see if they can get just a little bit of help to help them navigate, including all of the community resource specialists out of Cynthia's Office of Equity Access and Advancement. So we have like, you know, a bunch of strategies trying to get at helping.
Director Goss, you have a question?
I do. And I'm really concerned about the kids that are out of school now. And if you talk, you don't have to talk to many of them to find out, they know they're slipping. And they know they don't come as often and they know that they don't listen as much, the whole gambit. I'd like to see us do something once we are back in classroom to follow up with evening classes that aren't any charge to those kids that wish to, to join them. And I'd like to see a full array of those because I think we have lots of problems in that area.
Thank you.
Yeah, we agree. And is also why we need to advocate for full funding plus at the state level, even in the toughest of economic times. Our kids have been dramatically impacted by this. I think I am doing a presentation to the Education Committee and maybe even next week. And we'll share some of this data so they can really see the why behind why we need. Because, because we know that teachers will change their trajectory for kids and some of them have to have in person. And our metrics are so far off right now from getting more kids back in. That's the heartbreaking part of this.
I agree with that. And I agree that if we could do things in the summer as well. But for a lot of those kids, I'd like to see it as immediate as possible. You know, the longer they're into that pattern, the, the more damaging it is. If we could pick up on that right away before they get up to when they're going to move into classes for another grade or one time up, it would sure matter a lot, I think.
Director Goss, thank you. Is there any other quick question? We've got about three minutes. Hearing none. I just want to say, Superintendent Perry and your team, this is amazing. This is historic, guys. I mean, you guys have done an amazing thing. And you know, we will get there. I want our community to hear that we will get data to community. This data is owned by the community, barring a few things. So it's going to take time. We will get it in such a way that community facing, which people can use and hold us accountable. That way we can all work together and say, how do we really advocate for equity? You know, there can't be any equity lens without data. I mean, let's face it, that's all. So this is a good starting point. I really want to thank all of you for putting in hard work and getting.
And if I could, I just want to add, add one thing, which is in the past, this is a, this is a report that we would share once or twice a year. And I want to share with you that this is an indicator that we'll be looking at one aspect of it for the next six months. And so if you just look right here on this slide, you'll see that, so today we went over the overview, but we'll go deeper with social emotional supports in January, academic indicators in February, so on through June, we'll go over an overview. February will be interesting because we'll have data from the end of our second quarter. So we'll be able to, to show you how student performance fared halfway through the year, which is a good, a good time to share that with you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Udo Sanata. But I really want to thank everybody. This is a lot of work has gone in. I want our community to hear that in the middle of everything. You know, Superintendent Perry and her team has really worked hard. And this is important. Anything, if we can measure, we can change. If we can't measure something, we can never change. If we don't know where we are going, all roads will look alike. So this is the right starting point. So it keeps us, let's not jump at the data and start saying, why this, why that? This is a starting point. It'll give us, guide us in how we are putting the resources, programs, et cetera. So we can have real equity in real sense, not otherwise. So thank you very much. I think we need to get out or stay here for our next thing. I think we'll take about five or minutes break just to stretch ourselves, get ourselves. I don't think we have to leave this link. Am I right?
Yeah, that is correct. You'll stay on this link. And what you're saying is you want to start back at six oh five, correct?
Please, please. I just want to stretch and, and don't go anywhere. Please come back. Director Blasi, and who else? I think six fifteen, Jesse will join us, right? Director Leopold will join us. Okay, we're going to start this business meeting now, start with the land acknowledgement. I see most of, we have a quorum now, so we can start. Acknowledgement is critical in building the necessary trust to coexist in harmony with one another. Indigenous tribes and bands have been apparent on the lands of the Willamette Valley across Oregon and throughout Americas since time immemorial. In this valley, the ancestry of Kalapoya reaches the furthest back in time, reminding us that this plentiful place has been called home by its original inhabitants long before the names of the snowy peaks and bountiful waters were re-identified. Today, we acknowledge that the people of this land still exist and inhabit this valley, not as heirs to it or artifacts, but as reciprocal contributors to the modern society we live in. We forward our respect to the first peoples of this land, the nine federally recognized tribes of Oregon, and those who have ceded lands here. We reflect on the displacement, removal and genocide of indigenous people that occurred throughout Oregon and beyond. In so doing, we truly honor the gravity of the past and endeavor to see that people may live in harmony and equity on this land for posterity. May this acknowledgement carry resonance as a tool of peace over the lands and water we mutually rely upon. Please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events. Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. There is, there are no agenda modifications for today. And with that, we will move to the next item, the spotlights on success. Turn this over to Superintendent Perry. Superintendent Perry, it's all yours.
All right. Good evening, everyone. And good week, good evening to all our guests on the line. One of our favorite things about Zoom meetings is we get to see some of our community members and educators that we haven't seen for a while. So we're thrilled that you're here with us tonight. So our first spotlight is going to be presented by Jessica Brendan, the principal at Holman Elementary. She is going to present our community partner of the month. And Jessica, are you here?
I am. Um, so thank you so much for this opportunity. It is my honor to recognize Catholic Community Services, Salem Kaiser's Community Partner of the Month. Community, Catholic Community Services has been an invaluable resource for us at Holman Elementary. The work they do to support our students and their families is nothing short of amazing. For the past few years, they've provided Holman families and students with a community health worker. This worker is available to support any family at the school. Our community health worker is like a social worker times ten. She goes to houses, connects families with resources, helps students get what they need and much, much more. Our community health workers, Karina and Gina, don't, they, they truly don't give up on our families. Beyond providing a community health worker, Catholic Community Services has partnered Beyond providing a community health worker, Catholic Community Services has partnered with Mountain West Philanthropies to establish a system of support for our Holman community. A number of families are in really complex situations and this system of support helps make sure that they don't fall through the cracks. They coordinate support, whether that's connecting families with a community health worker, Liberty House, Arches, or a number of other social support organizations. Catholic Community Services has also created a six-week class titled, We Flourish Together. The class helps people to be mindful of their needs and helps them understand why, why we are the way that we are and why we operate the way we do. The class has been offered in English and Spanish several times to people throughout Salem and the Holman community. Staff and families have had the opportunity to take this class side by side and learn together. On top of all of this, Catholic Community Services has helped put together food boxes for families in need and set up little free libraries. We're so grateful for all the incredible work they do to support our families and students, and we look forward to partnering with them for many years to come. Thank you, Catholic Community Services.
Thank you, Principal Brendan. And also thank you to our partners at Catholic Community Services. All right, our next spotlight is going to be presented by Erin Nichols, our program coordinator for our counseling program throughout the district. And before she begins, I just want to say that Erin, you and your team of counselors have been instrumental to us during COVID-19, the way we stood up. You know, the phone calling system where we had counselors on all times of night and through the weekends. So families could call counseling in the spring when we shut down. And your leadership has been really critical to helping our families right now. And on top of navigating a number of crisis situations. So Erin, thanks for letting me just say a minute about how much I appreciate your leadership.
Well, thank you. I'm excited tonight to recognize two of our counselors. So again, tonight I am pleased and honored to recognize two of our outstanding school counselors in our school district, Ryan Marshall and Todd Bolbida. They're, they were recognized by the Oregon School Counseling Association this past fall, and we are so proud of their work. Ryan has been a counselor eight years and currently works at South Salem High School. On top of being recognized by ASCA, he also presented along with his South team at their annual ASCA conference this past October. The topic, partnering with your health room and counseling center and holistic wellness approach for the entire school body. Ryan considers being a counselor a great privilege. He recognizes the immense trust that students put in counselors when they tell their stories. With this trust and vulnerability comes a duty for counselors to try to support students in the best possible way. Todd has been a counselor for 15 years, first working at McNary High School, then South, and most recently returning to McNary, or as he calls it, back home. He is a finalist for the Oregon School Counselor of the Year and an honor that he definitely deserves. Todd says counseling is the best job in the world, and I would have to agree with him. He sees his job as the ability to make the difference in students one life at a time. Through helping students reach their full potential and supporting them when they are struggling, Todd finds the job impactful and rewarding. Both counselors hold the value of teamwork and high esteem. They both recognize that to support students both educationally and emotionally, teamwork is invaluable. They are grateful to work with their respective teams at South and McNary. We are proud to have these two phenomenal councils in our district. Thank you and keep up the good work, Todd and Ryan.
They need to show their faces for a minute since they're online with us.
They do need to show their faces.
Yeah, they do.
And if you say hello real quick, we'll be able to see you. They recognize you for all the work that you do.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks on behalf of all the council.
Oh, and the littles are with them.
Oh, yeah, put the littles back on too.
Put the littles on.
Yeah.
Oh, look at that.
All right. Thank you, Ryan and Todd, both of you. We appreciate you tremendously. And thank you, Erin, as well. All right, our next recognition is a Program of Excellence for a Blue Ribbon Award, and Stephen Lidle, our Director of Music and Drama, is going to present that. And you've gone one slide too far, Ethan, in the presentation. Oh, there we go. That's the slide. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody, for having us here tonight. I'm here with Directors Todd Zimbalman and Ashley Alexander to express congratulations to the West Salem High School Band. They were recently recognized as the Northwestern Division winner of the 2020 Programs of Excellence Blue Ribbon Award, presented by the National Band Association. The division which they earned honors included schools from Arizona, California, Hawaii, Nevada, Utah, Alaska, Idaho, Montana, Oregon, Washington, and Wyoming, very extensive list. To even be considered for this award, schools must submit an extensive portfolio of their work. They must include examples from multiple years and from all of their ensembles, and these artifacts must demonstrate a breadth of ensemble offerings and repertoire. They must also include data on achievements by both the ensembles and individual students. As you can probably tell by now, the award is highly competitive and it's not an easy feat to earn recognition. We are so impressed by the dedication of Todd and Ashley for working to support success in our student musicians. And we are, of course, are blown away by the talent and hard work of the West Band students. You guys are something else. We also want to recognize the incredible work of all of our music teachers in the West area on all they do to lay the foundation that makes this achievement possible, including James Newickis, who is here on the call with us today, who served as the Assistant Director for a number of years during this portfolio, Jamie Hall, Sam Reed, Delee Brown, Kendra Peterson, Ryan Eamon, and Jessica Sokoloff, and Becky Griffiths. West Salem's achievement means that they'll also be considered for the top national award. The national award will be announced this month, and we wish them lots of luck. Todd and Ashley, we are so honored to have you represent Salem Kaiser Public Schools in such an incredible way. Once again, congratulations.
Thank you. We'd love it if you would turn your cameras on so we could see you.
My camera's on.
There you go.
Oh, thank you.
Good to see you.
Yep. Nice glass of Pinot.
Awesome.
Okay.
All right. Our next spotlight will be presented by Nicole Spearman-Esselson, Coordinator of Career and Technical Education for Salem Kaiser School District. Nicole, it's all you.
Thank you so much. This is such an honor. I am so excited. Our teachers, K-12, have been working diligently to ensure that our students are engaged in some rigorous, high-quality curriculum, but tonight I can only honor three. And so it's my pleasure to honor three construction teachers, Andy Chidwick, Joe Simon, and Michelle Zalinski, for their unique innovative approach to teaching during what we can only describe as a very challenging time. These three construction teachers are from three different schools. They represent McKay, North and South Salem High Schools. The uniqueness about these three is they didn't allow the brick and mortar of the buildings to discourage them or to limit their abilities to provide a quality education. They actually joined forces and blended their talents. This innovative approach allowed them to engage students while supporting each other, which we can't take for granted. Well, in a blended classroom, this unique approach to distance learning was even recently highlighted by our Salem reporter. Their personalities, and if you knew these three know, they have some great personalities, have made for a highly interactive Zoom class. They play off each other and they're very goofy and unconventional, but they're keeping their students interested, engaged along the way. Some of those examples you may have experienced if you were part of their Zoom class would be pies in the face, outlandish costumes, which I can only imagine, and just simply telling great stories and jokes. All of this has created an environment to help our students get through a very difficult situation. Working together as a team helps them teach. It's challenging to teach to black screens. I'm sure many of you have experienced that from time to time. They're unable to see reactions and connect with students, but through collaboration, they're able to teach off of each other's energy, whether in a room together or by calling each other in from the perspective spaces. Working together helps answer the why for our students. And they do that sometimes in real time and sometimes in chat. They take turns instructing, monitoring chats, and demonstrating technical skills. Having instructors with very different experiences and backgrounds has allowed students to stay engaged and connect with their material. We are impressed by their innovation and the creation of edutainment, as Andy would call it. And I hope I said that right, Andy. We are proud of your creative, creativeness, making the most of a difficult situation for your students. Thank you, and please keep up the great work. Turn on your cameras.
Well, thank you.
There's Joseph.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, Andy. Is Michelle on too?
I'm here. Thank you.
I actually got to visit their class. It was very close to Halloween and I got to hear the scary ghost story. That was a fun day, Andy. So thanks for your innovation, all three of you, to really come together on behalf of our kids. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Super proud of all three of you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll be kind of, I can't see everybody.
Would you like me to stop sharing the screen?
Yeah, just until we can go to the next item. Superintendent Perry, Perry. Thank you very much. That was a beautiful presentation of the spotlight on success. We are very proud of our team. And with that, we go, we're going to start with the reports this time. It's really critical that we're going to have some very exciting reports Superintendent Perry is going to share. So before, so let me ask Superintendent Perry to present the good work they have done. Go ahead, Superintendent.
All right. Good evening again, board members. I'm gonna let both of our assistant superintendents walk through the next couple of presentations, but I just wanted to say that, as you know, we've all been wondering where are we with school safety? Where are we with SROs? What about our school discipline? And as we worked through a lot of work and thinking and engagement this summer, we really came to the place where we knew that we had to have a bigger process and that while we're in comprehensive distance learning, it gives us an opportunity to really rethink systems. And we know that anytime we need to really shift a system, that you, that that's hard work. Just like we would never have learned to teach virtually, except for the necessity of it in a global pandemic. We learn things that we didn't think we could ever learn. But in this moment in time, this gives us a really good place to be able to pause, think about our systems, think deeply about our systems, be sure that every system has a racial equity lens placed on it, and to also really gear up for a system that's based on restorative practice. So that's where we are headed. While all of us, me first, would want to be the, have been here in September. We aren't, and we're here now, but we have a chance to do this and do it right and to not make decisions that are quick and hasty and to engage our community in a very authentic process. I do want to thank a few of our community partners who actually, I think, were the ones that said, let's do a bigger reimagining school discipline process. And also really pushed us to be, to say, hey, some of this should be led by an external facilitator. So we're going to walk you through that, and I want to thank our community partners who have pushed hard with us, have come to the table and asked critical questions, and are, will be in, hopefully, this conversation with us. Because on the other side of this, we have this one chance to be better, and we have to do it right. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to both Dr. Dosnata and Dr. Sprouls, and they'll walk you through the Reimagining School Discipline and Student Safety and Wellbeing Summit, the timelines, some of the specifics, what we're looking for outcomes. So with that, and I want to thank the board for their patience with us as we were really thinking this through and untangling where we were.
So thank you. I want to begin by, thank you for this opportunity to, for us to share publicly all the work that we've been doing to make sure that we are putting students at the center of, of the work that we're doing and ensuring that students are safe and prioritizing student safety and well-being. So I want to start first by focusing on, on our why, but also, we always talk about the why. I also want to discuss the how. I think that's equally as important. And so for our schools, we have a mission to create safe and welcoming schools that are free of bias, racism, and oppression. And this is something that we've been discussing publicly since June. At that time, which is about the same time that I was on board of the school district, we engaged in a district-wide training that was led by Dr. Khalifa, and it was on culturally responsive school leadership. And this is actually his book right here that, that we learned from. And, and in this training, we were really taking the task on, on looking deeply at what it means to have culturally responsive systems, restorative systems, inclusive schools, and, and really deconstructing oppressive structures. And at that time, when we ended in June, we were asked to reflect deeply on our practices. And during that time, even for somebody like me, who, when I went into education, I always pledged to be a leader of equity, one that removed barriers for students. I had to think deep and hard about things that I've done in my practice as a high school principal that might have contributed to a student being excluded from school, whether it was administering a cursory suspension that could have been resolved with a restorative practice, or whether it was some sort of policy that I upheld that did not remove a barrier for a student, but upheld a barrier. And one thing that I thought about was, this is not necessarily about me. What I had is I had the opportunity to reflect, and I had the opportunity to make things better for students in my position. And, and as educators, we all have an opportunity to do that from this point on, and that's why I'm really excited about introducing this work. And one thing that we do get to do when we think about, what does it mean to have an environment that's safe and welcoming for all students, that's free of bias, free of racism, and free of oppression? It means looking deeply at what safety means. And safety for students means having physical safety, but it also means having social, emotional safety, safety where students are free of threats, safety where students are feeling included in, in the buildings. And we know when we remove that safety, we create an opportunity. Or when we create safety, we create an opportunity for students to learn. And so as we move forward, what we really want to focus on is looking at ways to reinforce that notion of safety for all students, especially those who have been impacted by, by oppressive structures that we have in the space. We want to reinforce the things that we're doing right to keep students safe. And we also really want to pledge to disrupt oppressive structures. And we want to create an environment where, where parents feel safe and where they feel the trust of passing their kids off to us. And so I think that this, these two initiatives that we're going to discuss with you today will really prop up that work. Dr. Sprouls?
Yeah, thank you for that, Dr. Dosnata. That was a really strong positioning of, of the work and I think our own ownership in the work. And so part of the background, and Superintendent Perry alluded to this as well, is the discussion around, in the boardroom that we've heard a lot in the community, is around the role of SROs. But as we reflected on this, SROs are a very small component of how we keep But as we reflected on this, SROs are a very small component of how we keep kids safe in our schools and out in our community as well. We firmly believe that to create equitable and systems where students feel welcomed, where families feel welcomed, that starts in our classrooms, that starts in our hallways, that starts on our buses. As kids comes, it starts in a, in a school office when a parent brings a complaint and how they're served and met in that office. And so safety is, is a multi-dimensional aspect that really hits all of our forty-one hundred teachers, administrators, and staff. Currently, we do have engagements with law enforcement who play a role in helping us keep students safe. We'll talk more about our safety systems and what that looks like, but our suicide risk assessment systems, our systems around adult threats and students and how we can support students in the community. We do have engagements right now with law enforcement to do that. So in the short term, in CDL, we don't have an SRO contract because we don't have students in buildings. But we are moving forward with conversations about a limited contract with law enforcement, a very targeted contract to be able to help keep students safe as we engage in this conversation. Superintendent Perry alluded to that we have a unique time right now. Never, and hopefully never again, will we have an entire school system that's learning from home. And this is our opportunity to take a pause and to figure out, how can we greet kids when they do come back differently? And, and how can we, and how, what's the role that each of us can play within that? So that's what we're proposing. It's a big overhaul.
Thank you, Dr. Sprouls. So when we returned to our work in, in the summer and had another training with Dr. Khalifa, one thing that we kept asking ourselves is, what are our systems that we have in place that we have control over that systematically exclude students? And one of them had to do with this idea of discipline. So we talked deeply at an internal level about discipline and how are our disciplinary structures perhaps affecting students? And we, we saw that there, there are a lot of, that there is disproportionate discipline within our, our district. At the same time, going back to June, is when we started engaging deeply, especially in a public level at the board meeting, you all know that this is something that we've been paying close attention to and, and, and engaging with is SROs on campus and student safety. And what we found through numerous discussions and listening sessions with students, community advocacy groups, and specialists, is that there is some overlap between our school discipline and our, and our student safety and well-being. And also with the, and that also encompasses that the notion of SROs. And we knew that we had to do an internal process where to, to create self-safe and welcoming schools, it's free repression, we need to reimagine what school discipline looked like. At the same time, we need to look very closely at systems that keep students safe from a variety of perspectives. And we need to, and there was going to be some overlap with this work. And so this is how we came to the idea to put forward two discrete processes that we're going to share with you right now. And Dr. Sprouls, you're muted.
Darn it. This is just a visual that kind of outlines the overall process that we are about to embark on to become more safe and welcoming school system. And we'll talk about each of these discrete processes that Dr. Dosnata alluded to around reimagining school discipline, which is kind of an inside-out process. How can we create more welcoming spaces within our schools and what does that look like? And then also a student and, and safety well-being summit, which is kind of an outside-in process. And how can we work with our community partners to identify how we can work together to keep students safe while they're on campus and our role for doing that as well when they're in the community? So they are two separate processes that we'll outline here just in a minute. Along the bottom there, and I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Emily Hicks, one of our communication, people who works in our communications office who helped us come up with this, this, I think it's a really nice visual of the process. So along the process there, you can see steps along the way. And while they appear to be linear, it's actually more circular. And I'm anticipating like step number two, so reviewing policies and historical practices. We'll probably do that at several points along the path. Research, of course, will, will guide our work at several points. We have lots of touchpoints for input from community and families and students, and we'll talk about those as well. And again, it's more of an iterative process. And so it's, it's more of a circular process than it is a linear one, which, which leads to our ultimate outcome. And I think one of the things that we found in all of our discussions, the outcome is something that most people agree on, that we want schools where all kids are known, all kids feel safe, all kids feel welcomed, all kids have the ability to thrive, that we could, we have a way of celebrating the success that all kids bring to our classrooms. That outcome is something that we, we have large-scale agreement on. There are processes leading up to that, that we're going to have to figure out and get agreements on what that looks like for our school system. So we'll step more in depth here.
So I, I did want to mention, as Craig, as Dr. Sprouls shared, we will have two discrete processes and that are somewhat intertwined in terms of what the mission is. Again, like Dr. Sprouls said, we all have a student safety and well-being summit, and that's our internal and external process. And, and that's scheduled to launch in January of 2021. And we're, we should, it should culminate in March. So it's a shorter process that will involve a lot of community, community members, and, and Dr. Sprouls will speak a little bit more about that. And then we have our internal project, which is the reimagining school discipline project. And that is an internal process that will be informed by stakeholders. I'll describe that at length momentarily. But that is actually launching now, and we anticipate it'll continue through the spring of 2021.
So just to give a summary of the student safety and well-being summit. So this is a summit where we will ask our community partners to join us around the, I guess, the digital table in this environment, to be able to help us have a discussion around, how can we keep kids psychologically, emotionally, and physically safe? Some of the partners that we'll invite into the conversation are people like the Department of Human Services, Child Protective Services, some of our community partners like Family Building Blocks, Liberty House, some of our community advocacy groups like the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality, the NAACP, a, as well as several other groups that will be invited to the summit. We will be inviting law enforcement as well to participate in the discussion because we're going to look at a historical perspective of what our current systems, what's working in the current systems and what are possible gaps in the systems. We're going to look at research-based, data-driven, to be able to inform recommendations that move forward. We're going to include perspectives from several of our community-based organizations and try hard to center student voice, particularly students who have been impacted by our current systems. And I think it's important to just say that we have strong systems to keep kids safe. We have a very strong model on what this looks like for our school system, and we have people in place and structures to be able to do it. However, there may be areas within that system that we can improve on. So the safety summit will actually hopefully help us inform what that could look like. So here are some essential questions that we'll use to guide the conversations at the safety summit. How do we keep students safe? How do we create school communities where, where students have a strong sense of belonging and an improved well-being? Where have our systems, where might they be causing unintentional harms? And, and how can we change shifts or, or shift disciplinary or practices that are necessary, necessary to address those harms? And then ultimately, what is the appropriate role for the, for law enforcement within these systems of student support? As Superintendent Perry alluded to, this will be facilitated by an external facilitator who we currently are submitting a request for proposals on, on people or organizations to help us facilitate this, this discussion.
So let's talk a little bit about reimagining school discipline. As I, I mentioned earlier, if we're going to create a space where students feel safe and welcome, then we're going to have to reimagine the way that we look at discipline. As it stands right now, and historically, discipline in schools has been some, has taken a punitive stance. So if a student breaks a rule, they normally start with maybe losing recess time. Or as they get older, they might have an in-school suspension. They might have detention after school. Or, and when you get into the high school level, you often see a lot of suspension, expulsion, displacement from school. And the challenge of that is the punitive measures don't, don't necessarily contribute to character building per se. And also, it doesn't restore the damaged relationships that may have occurred with the student committing a behavior infraction. And so what we want to do is, and importantly also, it, it, it reduces the amount of time often that students get, get access to instruction. So what we want to do is reimagine the way that we could approach our discipline structures. And as you can see, what we have highlighted, highlighted in the third bullet right here is take a restorative, authentic restorative response to student behaviors. So the way that we intend to do this is, this is largely an internal issue that will need to have authentic and inclusive voice from our community. Importantly, we'll need to have two-way systems from a school community that has been most impacted by our, our punitive, punitive systems of discipline that we have in place right now. The way that we intend to do this is, of course, by relying on some of our critical community stakeholders. Some of those are from the Alianza, which would be Mano Imano Coalition for Equality, CASA, LOSE, NAACP. And importantly, we want to be able to pull families and students into the conversation as well. So we'll have a student advisory group that will, that will get feedback from as we go through this process. We'll have town hall processes at, at each school that will be led by student, led by, excuse me, by district staff that will include students and families to help guide our work. And again, we're going to focus on designing the culturally responsive and authentic restorative processes. We're going to pull in experts that can help us identify researching best practices and importantly, implementing culturally responsive practices. So again, the, the purpose in this, in this design is to look at our internal structures. And we have a lot of outcomes that we're hoping to achieve that I'll share momentarily. But we're, we really do want to have an authentic community process where we, where we bring people into the fold, the community into the fold to, to give us feedback, to help guide our thinking and the share and to share ideas with us that could help us create more safe and welcoming schools.
Can I just add one thing, Ethan? We were on the pathway for restorative discipline practices and even have a, had a professional development plan to really start this work this year. And so we will continue to base our discipline system and restorative work because we need to begin building up our skill in the area. But what we didn't factor in, which I think is really important at this moment, is how do you get that parent and student voice into the system to know what they do expect from kids for how they show up and how they navigate our systems at school? So while the basis is restorative, we will learn so much from our parents and families in really listening to them about what do they expect and with our interactions with them and how their kids show up in our classrooms.
Thanks for sharing that. And I do want to give credit to some of our very skilled staff members, especially at the district level, who have been, been developing professional developments to help engage our, our staffs into, in the restorative processes. And our buildings have been on board from, from day one as we, as we launched this work. Additionally, I know we throw around a lot of edu-ees and educational jargon, and this is a public meeting. So one thing that I do want to share, and when we use the term restorative practice, restorative practice is, is a system when, if a student were to engage in a problematic behavior, instead of simply having a, a discipline where, you know, they lose something or they're taken out of class, what they're, what they actually need to do is have some education where they're forced to look at the way that they may have damaged a relationship or compromised the learning environment or the school safety. And then we need to come up with a plan where the student needs to restore, right, that damaged relationship. And sometimes it's in the form of writing a letter to a kid whose feelings they may have hurt. And oftentimes, it might be in the, in the form of, of engaging in a project that, let's say that the student vandalized something, a project to help restore that, that community space. One thing that you should know is the restorative practice is, is intended to look at baseline school behaviors. And I think that there's times when we mistake this for intervening with a serious crime that may have occurred on campus. That's a different issue that, that we'll address in a, in a different forum. But what we're really trying to do is, is get in front of those instances where we're seeing disproportionality in our discipline, especially among students of color for things like talking out in class, talking back, cutting in line, mid-to-low level behavior systems, which we think at the end, at down the road, contribute to students missing out on class and also could contribute in that student entering the school to prison pipeline. So though, that's, that's the area that we're really trying to harness and focus on and find systems that, that, that intervene with that and, and create a more inclusive school for all students. So one thing that I want to share is like, what are the outcomes that we can anticipate when we look at these structures? The outcomes that we can look at is first is, is our vision, right? And we, having a shared vision for what school discipline and behavior and learning for our students looks like. And again, that's the idea of inclusion versus exclusion. We want to look at and revise our discipline policies and procedures where necessary. We, and that will be informed by the research processes that we put into place, and the feedback that we get from, from our community and, and the work that's done in this project. We want to decrease the disproportionate exclusionary practices that we have in place. That's very important to us. That's, that's a measurable outcome. And we want to implement, like I mentioned, restorative disciplinary practices at all schools. And overall, we want to increase students' access to core instruction. We want to maximize learning opportunities. We want students to feel like they have ownership in their school. Dr. Sprouls, would you like to take this one?
Sure. And, and just so the board knows, this is our last slide in this sequence. And so I wonder if we could entertain questions from the chat after this, before talking about the student task force. So how are we going to be, bring community voice into this discussion? And I think this has been a missing component a lot of times. And we learned a lot from both the SIA work last year and from Dr. Khalifa's work on challenging us to lean into these conversations and to, to develop our muscle to be able to hang in there in these tough conversations at times. So we're hoping to have our community partners help us form more safe and welcoming schools. And so we're forming a superintendent's advisory committee, and that group will advise district leadership on the process of reimagining schools, discipline practices, as well on the process as the student safety summit, what that looks like. We're going to have town halls that Dr. Dosnata talked a little bit about at each school. Those will give families and students an opportunity to talk about discipline systems that have worked for them traditionally and ones that haven't. And to be able to inform a better system and a better structure. And just a quick word about that, I, I've said this before to the school board, but the process of going through the student investment account listening sessions changed me. It changed me as a leader. Particularly, we listened with some groups, some LGBTQ plus students who were middle school students who changed my perspective on my role within that, within a structure to support those students specifically and their needs. And so I and their needs. And so I came out on the back end of that, a different leader than I started. And that's what we're really hoping with these town halls is that the process will change us um, as we develop systems that support our families. We're also having a steering committee that will involve um, outside partners to be able to participate um, as we design um, systems to keep students um, safe and and implement our restorative practices model, um, which you just heard about a little bit. And then the Student Safety and Wellbeing Summit is another opportunity for the community to participate. Um, this is not, um, this, the participants at the summit will be invited to participate because we want to make sure that we have representative voices at the table. It's it's not an open summit for um, for all comers. But it is something where we will um, report out frequently to the school board on that progress um, um, for each of these committees, but for the summit in particular.
And 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 one thing that I do want to share, just as a culmination of, or to to close up this section of our of our presentation. Um, we've had the the opportunity to preview this um, presentation to to others and and receive feedback. And one thing that I I do want people to know is that this this effort isn't about compromising um, behavior expectations. Um, what it is about is about taking a different approach to the way that we that we hold our students accountable. Um, so there will certainly have to be some instances in the future where we're going to have to um, have some form of exclusionary practice if a a student creates an unsafe environment for for uh, students. Um, that might be one example, or is committed a serious infraction. Um, what we do want to do though is give our staff the tools, the training and support to treat our students who the public trusts in us, um, to treat them the way that we treat our own, our own children at home. With with a healthy balance of accountability, but also character building. And that's what we're really trying, that's the heart of what we're trying to get at in this process.
Dr. Shandra Giri, I wonder if I might suggest um, several of the questions in the chat seem to be about the student task force, and that's actually the next part in this presentation. Um, I'm wondering if it would be helpful for Dr. Udos and Ata to go through that part, and then we can take questions because we may we may have some of those questions answered in the presentation.
Yes, please. Go ahead. And uh, because that uh, can share that, and then we can open it up for a little discussion, please.
Okay.
Thank you. So I I do have a a presentation on the student task force. Anticipate this might be ten to fifteen minutes, so I I hope that that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. So um, as you all know, that in in June, and actually um, prior to my arrival, uh, there there uh, has been public discussion about um, the presence of of school resource officers, we refer to them as SROs on campus. And um, we engaged in numerous community discussions and uh, also uh, try to develop a strategy to have the best process to make the best decision for our students in this process. And one of them was uh, designing a student task force. And so what I like to do is provide a report on that, giving some background on on how that process went. What the recommendations were from those students that participated in the task force. And um, and where we go next, given uh, given uh, what has transpired with that group. I want to start first with a a quote from the student task force that I think will help center our the way that we uh, reflect on this work. Um, their their uh, quote is, "We knew as students that we need to keep an open mind to learn more rather than make judgments based on our own experiences." And that was been the student task force. And I I share that because um, our students uh, from the task force were a diverse group of students who came in. Some um, had very fixed ideas about what needed to occur to um, wi- wi- with the SRO program within our schools. And but they all did commit to having an open mind when they were in the process. And so I want to call that out and and uh, praise them for that. Because that's something that's hard to do, especially as an adult, is uh, is to make sure that you're fixed on uh, having an open mind. You're looking at a really complicated issue. So let me walk you through the phases of our of our process. When this, when this uh, issue of SROs on campus um, was in discussion in June, uh, we decided that we're going to go in a multi-phase process. And at first what we did is we started with listening sessions. We had about ten to a dozen listening sessions. That included um, having conversations with our community advocate groups with several student, student groups from different schools. Um, we tried to emphasize speaking with um, communities of color that had brought up concerns uh, related to SROs on campus. Uh, we also talked to to school officials, and we talked to some law enforcement. And so that was phase one. And from there, what we had was, we had an advocacy group meeting in July. And from that, we um, were given the advice to have a student-led process. And so that's what we did is we we um, developed a a student task force. Um, that was a collection of multiple students, um, diverse students from various schools, various backgrounds, various ideologies. And then um, from there, we um, have our fourth phase, which is what we just introduced to you, which is this district and community forum on a reimagining of school discipline and student safety and well-being. And I need to be upfront and say that this fourth phase wasn't, I wasn't outlined. We just knew that there needed to be a next state step. And the same with our third phase at first. We didn't know that we were going to develop a student task force that took the shape of the one that we had in August. Uh, we just knew that we needed to have authentic student voice. So a little background about our student task force. Um, you can see this image right here is uh, was taken at one of the 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 last student task force meetings that we have. Uh, please do know that the students were socially distanced and wearing their mask, and that was really important to us in that process. Um, we started with the collection of, I think we had sixteen or maybe even seventeen to start off with. Um, we did have uh, some students from Latinos in Unicef. And I wanted to take a moment to to recognize the leadership from um, from Luce. Um, we could not have um, put together this group without them. Um, their advocacy and leadership and community leadership has been very important to this topic and very important to us at the school district, so we appreciate that with them, although they, although they did not finish the process with them. Um, with us, uh, we we do really appreciate their involvement in this process, and that's a, that's sincere. So this group um, was a collection of thirteen students um, by the end. Uh, they were all currently enrolled Salem Kaiser Public School students. And that was important to us is they were the stu- the the youth that would have um, the most recent interactions with SROs um, when we were engaging in this in this process. Um, like I mentioned earlier, a lot of students have brought a broad set of experiences in ideologies. Um, one thing that is shared is almost eh, almost all the students on this group had had an experience um, with law enforcement, and many times it wasn't positive. But the students did um, again, pledge to keep an open mind as we as we walked into this process. And they wanted you all, the public, to know that this very much was a student-led process. Um, and we did our best to put the, to put them in a place where they can guide the process. Um, we were facilitators at times. But at the end of the, at the end of the day, they actually started asking us to ask us adults to leave the room often, so that they could really deliberate honestly. When we, when we assembled this group, um, we had about ten meetings, and we didn't know it was going to be ten meetings. We really had planned on it to be about six. But as they start peeling back the layers to this dilemma and all the problems, they started making requests that extended um, the deliberation time and the number of activities that I'm about to share with you. So the the things that we took then the task on was to evaluate the SRO program to learn more about the school-to-prison pipeline and review the community testimony that we uh, that was assembled uh, over the last few months so that they can provide the superintendent with a recommendation for SROs and school sa- and school safety. So here's a list of of the activities that they engaged with. Um, one thing that I do want you to know is that with all these processes right here, uh, some of them were things that we that we anticipated would happen and some weren't. But the students were very serious about this process. They took it very seriously. So um, the students, there's a student-led process, uh, they developed a system of governance and decision-making, um, and that took about a couple of meetings to really nail that down. Um, then they also included requests for for guest speakers in the information that they would need. So those guest speakers were, they varied. It included um, members from Salem PD and a SRO to share what SROs do. Um, and it also included uh, members from McKay's Counseling Department, so they could share what counselors do to keep students safe. Um, there's behavior specialists there and 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 school administrators uh, there as well that were able to share their experiences and their perspectives with the students. From there, the students would deliberate and decide what the next steps were that they needed to do. And the one thing that they were adamant about was if they needed to learn more about the school-to-prison pipeline. And so we had a drug and gang intervention specialist and also real youth advocates. Uh, they were JW Friday and um, Royal Harris from the Portland area. They have decades of experience of working with students and are very well respected in this in this area. Uh, they came in and they gave a presentation to students, and they really forced the students to ask deeper questions. And they reviewed the board testimony, and it was about a forty-page packet, I believe, double-spaced that they they went through um, systematically, that they they were very thorough in in reviewing that and then creating a process for discussing it. And then at the end, they provided recommendations to ten, which I'd like to share with you right now. Um, one thing, just to break up this presentation, but also to to frame the recommendations that they they provided. Um, this is from the recommendation. They said, "Through these unprecedented times, it was crucial that whatever we as a student task force did, we had to keep our community and families' safety in mind." So they really did try to take a holistic approach to this, also being very mindful about the impact that SROs uh, have had to all student groups and and paying very close attention to the testimony that was provided to them. So, so one thing that they were kept grappling with was this notion of needs versus wants. What do you need for to to school, for schools to feel to be safe? Uh, versus what do you want? Uh, what do you want your school safety to look like? What do you want schools to look like? So here's what they determined. Uh, one, the SROs are not necessary during the CDL. And if we were going, if SROs are needed for school safety, then the SRO system needs to be fixed. And what they meant by that in their recommendations is that uh, the SROs needed better accountability systems. They needed relationship training uh, on how to work with students. Um, they needed structures for mentorship. Uh, fixed structures for mentorship too, not just casual structures for mentorship. And they also needed structured student engagement. And we mean, um, eh, when they engage with students, it shouldn't be on a whim or because the student potential, could have potentially been just doing something wrong. But they wanted, if if SROs were going to be on campus and be part of a school community, they wanted them to engage in classes and talk to advisory classes about what they do and about how they can be a resource to students as a a uh, um, a measure that's preventative and not reactive. Right? So so those are the things that they were very passionate about in the recommendations. Um, here's also uh, an extension of the recommendations. Um, if SROs are present in schools, then we want them to focus on the prevention of adjudication or youth entering the system or the school-to-prison pipeline. They're very passionate that if they were going to have SROs, it shouldn't be at this one end, it should be on the prevention end. It shouldn't be on the reaction reaction end, but the prevention end. They saw that if SROs were going to be on on campus, it wouldn't to be, it wouldn't necessarily be for them to be a firm hand uh, for a student that um, they perceived to be um, getting into trouble, but rather they would de-escalate, especially in critical school conflicts. Uh, they will want SROs to ensure safety from outside threats. And importantly, they'd want them to improve relations between police and community. As they saw that as a barrier for students who walk on, walking on the campus who have had negative interactions with students, they see that as a barrier for students to um, engage with police and engage with school if they if they had experienced trauma from a pre- previous interaction with police. So one thing that I want to mention on this next slide, um, and I I really, I want to show a a picture of of a student uh, from the task force who who uh, I want to talk to a little bit about the student's leadership. I didn't want to just call one one of the students out by showing their picture. But there there was one um, member of the student task force, his name was Aaron. And Aaron is a student of early college. And you uh, at first, he was, he was very quiet. He was very shy, almost seemed reluctant. And and previously didn't have a a lot of opportunities to sort his leadership um, in in the traditional school setting. And I think what this um, what this process did is it gave students who conventionally haven't had the opportunity to be leaders to show their leadership. And Aaron uh, really grew as a leader, and this whole group really grew grew as as young leaders. That gave us a lot of hope. But something that Aaron would say, um, he was often a note taker. He was often a um, a process observer. And he, eh, even though he was soft-spoken, uh, there was two times that really stood out to me that he said this. He said, you know, he said, "Hey, everybody, this this thing that we're working on, it isn't about us. It's it's about the future generations." And so as I I close with this presentation today, I do want to show images of our of our future generations and share that the work that um, this young group is doing isn't, wasn't about them. It was about those that were coming up, and I just think that that is very noteworthy. And I and I want to um, publicly give them praise for the work that they did. It gives us a lot of hope.
Uh, can I ask, uh, I want to say thank you very much. This was just an amazing, a lot of work has gone in. I want to ask uh, Vice Chair Bethel if you could kindly read if some chats are there and then I want to take some time to acknowledge and open it up for a little bit of discussion. Vice Chair Bethel, do you mind helping?
No, not at all. Um, there's quite a few, so hopefully uh, Dr. Sprouls was following along and can help kind of answer based on both, both uh, reports. So back to the very first one, um, Director Carlo is asking, uh, what's the definition of oppression?
I'm gonna ask. Carlo, would you like to um, would you like to explain a little bit what you're, what you're hoping us to answer with that one?
Yeah, you used the word oppression. I don't know what it means. I know what it means to me. What does it mean in this context? Because if I'm asked by a public member, what oppression, I need to know what we're talking about. That's what I'm.
Uh, oppression is is um, systemic, uh, systemic structures that um, keep a group of people um, down or that it eh, negatively impact a group of people. In our country, we've seen a lot happen during race, uh, with regards to race. Uh, you can see that with disenfranchisement. And so within this context, um, oppression is uh, potentially if a student um,
Okay.
is being treated differently than a counterpart because because of a cultural difference.
Okay, that's what, that's what I.
Standard.
That's what I want. So let me make sure I can summarize what you just said. So it would be one culturally different group uh, I don't know what verb I want, to another culturally, to another cultural group. So it wouldn't be within culture, the same cultural group, but it has to be different cultural groups?
It's a, it's a structure.
It's a structure. Okay, give me a, give me a very concrete example because I'm slow tonight.
Sure. Um, so let's, let's think about bias, right? Um, there could be uh, there could be a um, a policy in which um, a student uh, misbehaves in class, and by misbehaves means talking, talking out, talking loudly.
Sure, perfect.
Right? And um, one, one group, um, one person that become, belongs to the same cultural group may get a reminder to lower their voice.
Okay.
Whereas there's sometimes circumstances where a student from a different cultural group uh, may be removed from the space and coached outside, removing them from. may be removed from the space and coached outside, removing them from instructional, instructional opportunity.
Those are the same as discrimination? Or that's why, why are we using discrimination instead of oppression? I'm sorry, I may am going too far.
No problem, because because oppression is a fixed structure. And so if there's, so what we need to do is review our policies and get input from our community to determine, do we have systems in place that might be that might be structural in nature?
Let me give you an academic example. So at the beginning of the year, we decoupled honors. Because honors, like honors, English as a freshman is your only pathway to get to an A P class. So if you don't get in there as a freshman and have, don't have an opportunity to engage in honors, maybe your family didn't push you, maybe you didn't know to sign up. You, the system has now oppressed you to for access. So that's why we did the embedded honors, so that every kid had an opportunity versus those that I might think look like they should have the opportunity.
I I appreciate that Superintendent Perry and and to expand on that, for instance. Yeah, let me expand on that. So oftentimes in schools, if a student is on an acad, a high academic track, that's oftentimes determined in middle school based on their performance and we'll say English Language Arts.
Yes.
If a student were to have arrived at our country or come up in a family where English is not their primary language, it doesn't matter if that student has met English proficiency when they were, let's say, a sophomore in high school and want to take that A P track because they're already put on a certain track or trajectory from a structural standpoint, that prevents them from engaging to, from engaging in that or from being able to access that that advanced placement.
Okay, I'm hung up on why is the word then structures not included? Oppression, to me, doesn't say structures. Why doesn't it say oppressive structures or some, I mean, more specific because that, I guess that's my question. I get it, I get it, but I don't see it. I don't see it there. To, just to look at it, I don't see it.
What's that?
Yeah, so.
Throw something in there. Director Carl, do you mind if I throw something in there related?
I'm done. I'm good.
Okay, so I understand, I understood Superintendent Perry's example of a structure. But I didn't understand the first one and forgive me if I get your name wrong. I I try to practice it.
It's okay, it's okay. Don't be too hard on yourself.
Call you doctor you right now, just out of respect.
Sure, sure.
So um the example you gave had nothing to do with A P, though. You were talking about a systemic issue. It sounded more like it was a discipline issue. And to me, that's not a systemic issue, that's an issue with the individual or individuals, whether it's the the student behavior or it is the principal or the teacher and their reaction to that behavior. That is not a, to me, that is not a systemic issue, that's an individual issue. And I don't think we should put them both together. I think they're separate.
Sure. Well, let me, let me elaborate and then I'll allow Superintendent Perry to elaborate. Right now, with our discipline, response to discipline, we operate off of a metric, off of a matrix. And so our our disciplinary structures are systemic from that standpoint. But now what we have is this intersection of of subjective judgment that intersects with this system that that ultimately ends up in, we can see it in the data, with higher levels of exclusion for our Latino students and for our black students at high numbers in in middle school and high school than 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 their white counterparts, right? And so what we need to do is look deeply at our systems in terms of our discipline to see if there's something that's that's occurring there that's leading to that outcome.
But doesn't that speak more to the, you know, if, you know, I'm a computer person, right? You write down a sentence, that's that's sentence, that's the rules. But how they can be interpreted, maybe it has to do with the individual, right? So I keep coming back to, I think it's an issue of the individual. Not to say that the system doesn't need to be fixed, not saying that at all. I'm just saying, I think there's two components. And I think it's real important that you're always gonna have human beings and you're always gonna have two components, you're gonna have your rules and you're gonna have people's interpretation or, you know, how they commit the issue. And it's always gonna affect how they proceed.
No, I agree with you. I'm not sure. Yeah, I agree with you. It trickles down to an individual, but that individual's judgment is informed by the system.
Dr. Odessa, thank you very much. I really think this is an important thing. It is going to be a process we are all going to learn over time. It's not going to be completely fixed overnight. You know, when we started this business, you know, tackling the systemic inequities or systemic racism is a messy business, guys. It's like doing surgery. You just can't stab the belly and say, I entered the tumor. It's gonna be layer by layer, you're gonna cut and people are gonna bleed and there's gonna be all kinds of reactions and you can take thing. There are two areas, what I'm hearing, listening to you. There is gonna be a power differential that needs to be changed, that's what I'm hearing from you. So that people, doesn't matter if I'm from a Latinx family, black family, white family. We understand what the rules expectation is there so that we can also participate and know what our rights and responsibilities. The second thing is we're gonna tackle the way the policies read and how we're gonna train and implement the policy so that the outcome, there is no wide gap between what we are seeing. For example, if you go through the data right now, the Latinx student versus white student, the expulsion suspension is like two is to one ratio. Now, that, I suppose, is that what you're referring to as fixing the systemic changes so that you can see the disparity in outcome disappears? And our processes are such that our policies are such that training of our staff are such that we interpret consistently without such, leading to such wide outcome. And families are able to understand what is expected at a school so that one doesn't forget how to appeal if there is a problem. Because right now, what you see is a very few kids end up having someone appeal and goes to the board before the expulsion. Most others kind of get expelled without even knowing whether to appeal or not. Is that what you're referring to as system, fixing the system?
Yeah, our our ultimate goal here is to provide maximized learning opportunities for students where they feel safe, welcome, and an overall sense of well-being.
I would just add that, and I think Director Hyun's point is a good one, that the best systems, this is what education is, the best systems are implemented by an individual person who has a relationship with an individual student. And so the way that we can set up that relationship to happen in the most positive manner is what we're trying to do in systems change. And so when Dr. Udosanata was talking about restorative practices, that's a way that allows teachers to interact with kids on an individual relationship basis to be able to change the way that they're perceived when when a behavior happens. And so I think that is a line that we all know, that's what makes education so powerful and so difficult. Because it all boils down to a relationship between a teacher and a student in the presence of content. So I think there's really good things to be learned there.
You know, I I just wanted to know if there's any other questions we just missed. And yes, Director Lipold, welcome, welcome, and we'll consider your attendance as well now. We have one more to the group.
Thank you. I got here around six fifteen. And I apologize for the tardiness, I just also go to school, so. But yeah, so I had two questions. One of them is, I'm sorry, I was forgetting the exact words on it now, it's been quite a while since the presentation was up. But the first question was on the town halls. What are we doing to ensure that our town halls are done in an equitable way to to ensure that people can attend? To keep attendance up, because even though it says at all schools on the on the slideshow, we're probably not gonna be in the schools every single time, especially because of COVID. So what are we doing to ensure that people know and they get the word, they get the word out so that way people can participate?
So let me just quickly answer that. One is we will have to do them virtually. So we're gonna build up our skills to do town hall meetings across all the schools. But one way to really ensure people show up is by invitation, right? And especially as we look at a school and we look at any disproportionality in the discipline or the representation of the school, we need very specific outreach to the kids and families that represent that school. So we will encourage some targeted invitations and in a virtual format and to be sure that when, if we don't get it right, because sometimes we don't, sometimes and that happened with the S I A where we struggled to get attendance, then we'll circle back around to try again. So that happened with our our Hispanic community in the S I A process, and then we had the coalition. We paid them to make phone calls to get people there, and then we had hundreds of people. So it's, we'll take some of the lessons learned from the S I A. And also that those steering committee, that's why we need community partners on the steering committee. Because they also really help us and remind us to be sure that we're getting out and getting people specifically invited. Does that help?
Yes, it does. And then my second question is on the superintendent advisory board committee, whatever, I forgot the actual wordage, but I think that was it. It sounds like there's gonna be a lot of community members involved in that. Are we going to have any board members on that as well?
I actually think we should have one board member on the superintendent's advisory committee. And I also think that's a place to help keep the board in the loop. I think we should publicly have updates about this, these processes each meeting. We should be very transparent on who's on the advisory committee, who's on the steering committees, what's our attendance at town halls, a little bit like we did with the S I A processes where we tried to keep updating at the board level.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. And then to Satya and Danielle, I guess we can email later, but I was hoping, could I be on that? I would like to be, I would like to be involved in those conversations later.
All right, we'll, 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 we'll go into the thing. We've got a lot more agenda items to. Is there any other question? I just want to.
I'd just like to say, this is Danielle, that I think several of us want to participate in this, Jesse, and we need to have that larger conversation.
Oh, yeah, totally agree.
Is there anything else that anybody?
There's actually several questions in the chat that we can try to answer those and send those out. If we don't get to them, we'll, we'll try to honor those questions.
Yeah, that'll be helpful, Dr. Sprouls. Director Blasi, go ahead, please.
Oh, just real quick, not so much of a question, but just a couple of comments. I know that the community has been patiently waiting. And I just, I think that this is groundbreaking for a school district. We've seen a lot of school districts and organizations across the state and the country make very quick decisions, and that's not to say they were the wrong decisions or the right decisions. But I appreciate the superintendent being innovative and courageous enough to step back a bit and and look at this from a larger perspective. Because I I do agree, the issue around S R Os that is so polarizing right now is just part of, part of all of this. And so I appreciate the very thoughtful approach. And I think the students said it better than anybody could have. That this is the future. This isn't just about today, it's not about us, it's not about, you know, just today's students, this is about the future of of our education system. So I just wanted to say thank you for being courageous and to the public for being being patient. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Blasi. I really appreciate. And what you said is absolutely true and you know, if there's no other thing, I really want to say this has been, I want to not only you know, recognize an amazing job Superintendent Perry and the leadership team and so many people have done. I also want to thank our board for hanging in there. We're just hanging in there. This was very painful, this was very difficult, but it was very much needed. This is a quote I really want to take from the, you know, reconciliation, truth and reconciliation committee, commission in Maine. One of the chief from Bavanaki tribe, he said, we have to recognize that we are all tied to each other in common destiny. And our community and nation's future depends on our responsibility to each other, the land, and those children yet to be born and all other living beings within our life cycle. So it doesn't have to be adversarial. We can all be aligned and push the car, and this is my addition, we can all be aligned and push the car in the same direction. And so I really appreciate, you know, I'm in the Legislative and Party Committee in O S P A, close to two hundred school districts. This has been a historic milestone and I think we have done a very thoughtful, deliberate process. Somebody had come and said, you know, let's do what others have done and had a bumper sticker solution. I wouldn't be satisfied, to be honest. You know, it's like when your biopsy shows that it's cancerous cells, you just don't put a Band-Aid and walk away. You just dig in as much as possible, dig in, dig in, dig in, and then make sure that you do a thorough job. And I'm really confident, this is a real deep equity work. And you know, in the beginning, it was like a traffic jam, none of us knew where we were going. But in the end, it's going to be a very good one. Not only through this process, but I really want our community and our district and our and our board to be really involved in making sure that we continue to monitor and nurture this as we go. We're gonna learn, it's gonna be messy. It's not gonna be clean and smooth ride, but you know, let's not jump at each other. And let's kind of, with no shame, no blame approach, let's kind of address this. To me, this is addressing this important issue of redesigning discipline and safety in Salem Kaiser Schools is a milestone in our journey towards systemic reconciliation, because this really is what we're talking about historical trauma. Looking back at our data, looking at our processes, looking at our ninety different communities that live here and so that we can really create a safe space where all of them have an opportunity to have good outcome. So I think this is going to be a beautiful thing. And so, thank you very much. Sorry, we couldn't just come up with a simple solution soon. Some simple solution doesn't mean it would have, it would have been a bumper sticker solution, everybody would have been happy in the moment. But it wouldn't have allowed people to kind of sift through all these deeper issues. So thank you and good job Superintendent Perry and your team and our board for hanging in there. So we'll go to the next presentation now. We have a lot of more. Next is on comprehensive distance learning and COVID updates, Superintendent Perry.
All right, so we're gonna go back to our, to assistant superintendents again for our COVID update and C D L update. And I know that you've been getting a number of requests from parents about engagement. Doctor Sprouls, I'm gonna steal your thunder for a minute. But if you want to visit virtual classrooms, we would be happy to facilitate that for you. We have a number of teachers that volunteer and our level directors are in and out of classrooms all the time. And in this virtual world, it's a little quicker to visit a classroom than it is getting in your car and driving. So if you are interested, please let Alice know and we will get you into some classrooms to see what's happening with kids. All right, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Dr. Sprouls.
Thank you. And just to second that, I really encourage people, if you have time to to pop in with us into some of our learning spaces. I went to a bilingual kindergarten classroom, actually two of them, back to back. And it's amazing to see what our teachers are doing to keep kids engaged. And it's amazing to see a five and six year old learner in that space. And so would love to be able to to do that, facilitate that for you. It gives us some some sight as to what our teachers are doing. And honestly, our teachers are doing amazing job right now. So we can go to the next one there. Ethan? Ethan, thank you. So um, I'm going to go relatively quick through this presentation. Um, just for the sake of time and because I think um, these are metrics that we all probably know pretty well. Um, our current metrics from Marion County is that we're at 580 cases per 100,000 for the last two weeks. Um, and unfortunately, our test positivity rate is all the way up to 12.3. So um. Dr. Shandra Geary, um, some people are asking for a break. Is that something you would entertain um before we uh move through these slides?
Well, why don't we do that? Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll come back.
Okay, thank you.
So what time is it? Seven thirty-one?
Yeah.
So we'll do, we get back at seven thirty-six.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shandra Geary. So to just um pick up right where we left off on a very red um looking map.
Greg, sorry to interrupt you. Can you prompt me when you want me to change the county?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Ethan. Um, so here's a glance at Marion County. We're at 580. Um, and remember the threshold that we need to hit. To come back to blended learning is 100. So it's 100 cases per 100,000 to be able to transition. Back to blended learning or to blended learning, since we've never really transitioned to it in the first place. Um, and then you can go to the next one, Dr. Dosmetah. So here's Polk County, and this is just a little point of reference. Polk County has tr- traditionally lagged. Relatively far behind Marion in their COVID rates. Um, but they have been increasing in their COVID counts. Um, uh, a lot for the last six weeks or so. So, so Polk County is currently up to 460. And their test positivity rate is 10.9. So just a quick takeaway for this. Um, for both of our counties that we serve across our school district, um, we're experiencing in some cases. Um, very dramatic rise in COVID cases from week to week, which this is reflected across the state. And you can go to the next one. So here's just a snapshot, and, and I know the school board um know this, but this is kind of for the community um listening. That this is just the snapshot of the Ready School Safe Learners guidance around when is, when a district can transition. From different modes of learning. So notice that it says over 200 is for distance learning. With limited in-person instruction. So we are well over 200, of course, um, at this point in time. Um, it seems like a lifetime ago, but it was about three and a half weeks ago that Governor Brown. Came out um with a press conference and um made a statement around trying to have as many kids back. In blended learning by February. Um, and then the case counts have dramatically increased um in the, in the time since. Um, since she made that declaration. So I just think it's important for us to realize the ODE guidance says. Once a district gets over 200, they can continue doing limited in-person, but they need to pause and revisit their blueprints. And so that's what we're going to do exactly. Um, and then hope to continue to serve our kids through limited in-person um in the months to come. So this is just a shot of where we are. We, we all know we're in the stream, extreme risk category. Um, and so um, because our cases are over 100. And we can go to the next one. So here are just some things that we've learned about COVID. And I think it's a time for us to reflect on this a little bit as a district and as um our district systems. Um, we have a district health authority and she has a partner in um human resources. Who track COVID cases, working with Marion um County Public Health and Polk County as well. Um, since the beginning of August, um, we have a, a few over a thousand cases of investigations. That our school-based teams, I mean, I'm sorry, our district-based teams have conducted. Those involve both staff and student illnesses. However, an important thing to remember, most of these are community-born illnesses. They are staff who are associated with a school, so then we conduct that investigation. But it's not necessarily a staff who is um, who has contracted COVID and come into the school, if that makes sense. Um, same thing for our students. Um, we found overall that our top two case, our top two causes. Um, of people spreading COVID, by far the largest is personal relationships outside the contracted workday. Um, we've established time and again that schools are not super spreaders. That we have protocols in place that when followed can prevent the spread of COVID. Um, and so that's number two, failure to follow some of our guidelines. Um, and, and calling out, I uh did an elementary admin meeting right before this uh school board meeting. And I had them shout out, you know, where is the location in your school where we have centralized as the most um probability to have. Um, COVID spread. And they all shouted out staff rooms. And that's exactly right, because it's where people will come into a staff room, take off their mask to be able to eat and to be able to congregate. It's not comfortable doing that, keeping a six-foot-bound uh uh barrier away from each other. So we tend to be a little bit closer when we do that. And we found that um, that is a place that we've really had to focus on. So we've learned a lot about COVID in the last few months. And, and our overall takeaway is. We have strong systems in place to be able to support people. Um, and we have strong structures into, in place to be able to prevent spread. You can go to the next one. Thank you. Uh, am I talking about this one, Ethan, or are you? I can't remember on this one. I'll just dive in. Uh, I, if, and I'm sorry if I'm stealing your thunder here.
No, I'm sorry about that. I, I actually didn't hit the unmute button. So I was gonna. It happens to all of us. You don't have to be a rookie. Um, so what I did want to share is that uh. Let me take this, this slide because this talks about some of the hardships of, of comprehensive distance learning. And I get to take the next slide, which talks about some of the bright spots.
Okay.
So as we shared um during our, our work session, um, when we were reviewing um grade distribution. Um, we know that there, there's, the indicators suggest. CDL or comprehensive distance learning is having a, um, a, a negative impact. On grades for some of our most impacted learners. Um, and by impacted learners, meaning learners that are having trouble accessing. Um, comprehensive distance learning, because perhaps the conditions at their homes or the supports that they have at their homes or a variety of. Or not having the types of supports that they're used to having in the face-to-face environment. Um, but we're, we're having um. A lot of students, so in one population was our ELL population, that's showing to be impacted by, by um CDL. Uh, learning on a, at a computer screen is really challenging for our youngest learners. And this goes for our pre-K to the third grade. It's, it's um a challenge to learn basic skills. Um, when you are on a computer, right? And when, when um, we know that being on the computer, even though it's. It's the best substitute that we have right now, can't replace, especially for our youngest learners who rely on a lot of personal interaction. Um, um valuable uh uh instruction that they get in, which is all the reason why we're prioritizing them. Uh, when we come back to in-person instruction. Uh, I mentioned a couple, I mentioned that our ELL population is, is one that had. Uh, has been impacted by um CDL in terms of opportunities for education. But, but so have uh, has our sped population as well. And then students who struggle with organization or executive functioning, they're at a higher risk to, to have gap in their line. Um, compared to, to others that don't fall into those, into those areas. And so. W- with this tells us is we need to find more creative ways to um support students um who are having barriers to access. Um, one thing that we're doing right now as a strategy is finding ways to maximize LIPI and prioritize the students. Who are being impacted, getting them in uh some in-person supports if possible. So here are some of our bright spots from CDL. Um, w- we're starting to iron out the kinks. So across the board, educators are becoming uh more technologically savvy. Uh, we're learning how to use Canvas the right way, how to use our, that's an online platform for our public listeners. How to use all of our public platforms, um, ways to double down on our communication, so that we are keeping parents informed. And better ways to engage our students as, as both uh instructors and learners are acclimating to um. Uh, CDL, which was a little bumpy at first. Uh, we know that connection matters. And even brief check-ins make a big difference for students. And, and we really did see that. I know we point to McNary a lot, but a lot of our schools. Uh, were, were maximizing the number of students that we can bring in during CDL. Uh, during, in a, in a LIPI format before we were um, because of, of the, the uh pause. Had to scale back the numbers that, of students that we're bringing in. And I want to give a, a kudos to our operations team and our safety and risk team. Who just put systems in place to prevent um any s- major super spreader incidents. And we know that when we follow protocols, that, that schools aren't super spreaders uh as, as Dr. Sprouls just illustrated. Um, and we, we, it also gives us confidence to that uh when our metrics come down. And when, when they permit, we're going to um, we're going to know what it takes. And be able to bring students back. Uh, we're going to have strong possi- uh, strong processes to prevent outbreaks. So tho- those are some bright spots from, for CDL. So um, our next uh segment of our reports has to do with, with athletics and activities. And so I want to give you an update on, from the OSAA. Again, I want to, I want to focus on, on the bright spots before we talk about updates about when we'll be able to get kids back into um. Uh, activities, uh, LSAA sanctioned activities. Uh, so first is um. Our out-of-season work until it was paused a couple of weeks ago was, was successful. It was a successful uh first season. Um, and that's the, the season where we have out of, out-of-season sports uh participating in. In activities that weren't competition. Um, it gave students an opportunity to engage in person with their peers and all the benefits of the. Of the structures and the benefits that being part of act, um, extracurricular activities uh brings to our students. Um, and each week we average about 1,500 um athletes and musicians who are able to access programs. I have to admit that my, my child was one of those. And so we're thankful that he had the opportunity to, to participate. And, and we are eagerly awaiting the time when he can go back to it. Um, so uh. The coaches, uh, I want us to give a huge shout out to coaches. Um, they did an outstanding job of being accountable, of following protocols. Uh, of reporting, um, anything that we needed to know to keep students safe. Uh, and always uh working closely with their athletic directors to make sure we're doing things the right way, but also create, uh, providing creative opportunities for students. So um, we did have some new guidelines and um, Dr. Sprouls, feel free to jump in if I, if I miss anything here. Um, I know that uh, uh. We often try not to read off of our slides verbatim, but with some of these guidelines, I may do so because the information is so important. And this is the first time for a lot of people, uh, especially parents who are listening to see, to see this information or hear this information. So I want to be really clear and not embellish too much on this, on this slide. So we did have new guidelines that came out. And it, they're OSAA guidelines, but we also have to ad- adhere to Oregon Health Authority guidelines. And so um, the participation, we're going to uh reintroduce participation after the break of, of OSAA activities. Um, and our season two, which I'll jump into in the next slide, uh, which is our, our fall season. Will start in March, and I'll give you more details about what that will look like as well. One thing that we need to make sure that we do is even though OSAA gave us a plan, we need to adhere to our county risk level. So uh, what that means is our indoor sports and recreational sports, our indoor sports and recreation is prohibited. In extreme-risk counties. As Dr. Sproul showed, uh, Marion, Polk County are extreme-risk counties right now, which means. Indoor activities are still prohibited. Outdoor sports and recreation are allowed in all counties with the exception of full-contact sports. Uh, they're still prohibited. Football, basketball, I believe cheer. Um, can you confirm, uh, Dr. Sprouls? Those are full-contact activities. Um, training and conditioning can take place uh following safety protocols and statewide mask and face covering guidances. Uh, regardless of, of guidelines for competition, SKPS wants to find ways to keep students physically active and engaged. Meaning this is a really big priority for us to get kids reconnected. And I know um, for many, it was, it was disappointing and for others, it was devastating when we had to put a pause on. A student uh engagement in activities a couple of weeks ago. And I, I just. And I just for what it's worth, our athletic directors have been meeting almost every other day for the last couple of weeks to discuss creative ways and interpret the guidelines so that we can bring students back as soon as possible. So here's
Could I just add one thing on there, Dr.? The way, just in real simple terms, the way that the new guidelines are, they're focused on indoor activities and outdoor activities. Even in an extreme risk category, we can still have outdoor activities. They just cannot include full contact sports. So that's exactly what our athletic directors are struggling with right now is in January in Oregon. How do we maximize outdoor activities and workouts to be able to keep kids engaged and moving and participating without bringing them indoor? So that's really the, and we can't bring them indoor until our cases get out of the extreme risk category into the high risk category, which is under, right now, the threshold is under two hundred cases. So that's why we were doing that. And there's some questions in the chat. Why did we decide to pause? We decided to pause in coordination with our local health authority based on our metrics. Because our metrics were increasing at such a high rate that we decided to pause and take a look at our procedures before we could start reintroducing again. So those are the two quick answers.
Can I clarify a question? I'm sorry, Dr. Sprouls. When you say in coordination with Marion County Public Health Authority, what does that mean?
Yeah, that means that we we're in regular communication with Marion County Public Health and their epidemiologists with our district health authority. So we meet with them as a group. They meet probably once a week to be able to get feedback on what are school programming, how is it going? What are incident rates? How are we supporting the the cases that are appearing in our schools? Marion County has a role with incident contact tracing. And they also have a role with working with us to be able to decide how we're reopening and where and when that's happening. Is that, Director Bethel?
Oh, yes. Sorry. It did. Thank you.
Okay.
And and those meetings occur on on Friday afternoons, Director Bethel, with the Oregon Health Authority. One thing that I do want to
Doctor, I'm sorry, it's not the Oregon Health Authority, it's Marion.
Sorry about that. Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Okay, sorry. Yeah.
I misspoke. Yes, it's the Marion County Health Authority. So one thing that our that our athletic directors are also looking at closely in terms of student safety, which aren't outlined by our health authorities, are field conditions, right? And the what are the conditions on which we can bring in different groups, like in terms of in scheduling in in certain areas? And so and also light, light is an issue right now. Because as as you can see on the screen right now, our fall sports will resume practice if if the metrics permit, right? When we resume practice, it'll still be relatively dark outside after school. Right? So we're trying to to find creative ways to to create to provide opportunities for students to engage, knowing that it's not like the summertime where it stays late and or stays light outside until eight thirty at night, ten or nine o'clock at night, right? And where the 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 Oregon harsh or the the wet and damp and cold Oregon winter hasn't set in yet. So so those are things too that we're we're taking into consideration as well. We do have athletic fields that 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 make it a little bit easier, but those are those are a lot of things that our athletic directors are trying to sort through. So again, just the good news is that statewide. There's the OSAA has released a three season plan, six weeks each. To begin on March first, the falls, it goes a little bit out of, it goes out of order. So the fall season would start in March. The spring season would start in in April and the winter season would start in May. Do know that practices for those in seasons will begin on February twenty second. With the exception of football metrics permitting, would begin February, February eighth. And so all out of season or season one workouts, practices, et cetera, can continue up to that fall to that fall date. And then we would adhere to the the in season practice schedule that's outlined on the second bullet. So, Dr. Sprouls, would you like to talk about Lippi?
Yeah, we can talk about limited in person instruction or superintendent's favorite acronym. So one thing that we've learned about limited in person instruction is that it is a powerful equity tool. It gives us a way to be able to target supports for kids who need them. But it can't replace comprehensive distance learning. It can only be for a maximum of two hours a day. And there are also really tight constraints over how many different cohorts our staff members can interact with. A maximum of five per week. And each cohort can and needs to be less than twenty students, twenty students or less. So about three weeks ago, in coordination with the same pause that we had around athletics. We put a pause on limited in person, not not stopping it entirely. But we paused it to make sure that our school systems and structures are in place to be able to make sure that we're keeping kids safe during this outbreak that we're seeing right now. So we currently have very limited number of students participating. However, we would like to be able to increase that number because it's our best guess that we're going to be in CDL for the foreseeable future. The February third date of having students back in blended learning that we originally publicized about three weeks ago in coordination with the governor is not going to happen now. I just think it's important for us to realize that our metrics are nowhere near the the point where we could start bringing kids back in a blended model. Remembering we're at five eighty and we need to be below one hundred to be able to bring students back in a blended model. When we do have the opportunity to bring students back in a blended model, we're going to focus first on the pre K through third grade students. Those those students that Dr. Udosanata talked about needing basic skills retention to be able to get them in. In the meantime, we're going to focus on getting really good with CDL and maximizing our our safety structure so we can bring more kids in for limited in person. School teams right now are meeting to review their safety protocols to take a pause to explore what we learned before we start expanding. It's important to realize at one, in one week, we had almost eight thousand students. Twenty, that's twenty percent of our overall student body in for limited in person instruction. And we did that safely without causing a spread. So we were able to maintain our our structures as we learned and moved forward. So here's our plans moving forward. We're going to constantly revisit the metrics and update our plans based on those metrics. As I mentioned, the pre K through third grade is our highest priority. We're going to start planning for the transition when our COVID cases drop below two hundred. That will give us a window of time, because hopefully our trajectory is going down at that point. To be able to have the systems in place to be able to welcome our pre K through third graders back in a blended model when we do drop below one hundred. That's the current number that we're shooting for. In the meantime, as we talked about with our OSAA activities, we're going to encourage outdoor learning activities, athletics to the greatest extent possible. That's going to include our community transition program and our students who participate in community based programs at CTEC. Through our and our CTE programs that might not be located at CTEC but off site. We are going to prioritize fields and outdoor facilities for school based programs. And Ethan mentioned this a little bit. Things are muddy right now. So we have limited number of fields for our school based teams to be able to use for workouts that also have the lights that we can use. But then, when we can, we're going to open up our fields and facilities in accordance with our traditional seasonal schedule. So this could be groups who have traditionally used our fields that up to this point, we have not been opening up. We're going to reopen those fields when we can, based on the season. A lot of those fields are kind of muddy for now.
Yeah, and and just I want to field one question. Director Bethel asked, how come lights are an issue? They've never been an issue in the past. Historically, our our fall sports, which has the most number of outdoor sports and prior to Halloween, October thirty first, and that's before daylight savings. And so I'll I'll pick on 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 South Salem cross country because that's what my my child participates in. When I go to drop him off, my child off, who runs at Busch Park, there's not lights there. So that's a safety issue where 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 students are prone to tripping. And normally it just happens nicely in that when we start tryouts and workouts for our winter sports, those are almost all indoors. Are a lot of them are indoors. And so you think wrestling, basketball, swimming, et cetera. That's can happen after school where it starts getting dark at four thirty and there there's lights. So what we need to do is just if we're going to have out of season athletic activities that are occurring when it's dark outside, we want to make sure that we're looking at all aspects of safety, which includes light.
And can I just hit the one point that we missed in the presentation is that we are looking at a partnership with Chamecada Community College to be able to expand access for our high school students to be able to earn college credit during this time. So that's a, that's another one of our plans moving forward to support our kids in this unique time. So that was it for the presentation around CDL or metrics.
I want to follow up on one thing too. The bullet point around opening our fields for traditional seasonal use, that does mean to our community as well. We just have to remember that for our school programs, we're going to have many more outside because our goal is to get as many kids outside involved as possible. But yes, we'll work through for our community programs as well.
I have two questions, please.
Go ahead, Dr. Hine.
Uh, thank you. So they're kind of not really related. One is from a parent that texted me during the meeting, wanting to know if these decisions you're including and having discussions with the coaches. And my other question is, while you're thinking about that first one, who is, who does the high school scheduling? I know of a student who was assigned two PE classes. They were only given four classes and half of them were PE. And I'm just wondering, how does that happen?
Now, let me take both of those. The high school scheduling is done by our curriculum assistant principals and the council school counselors. So anytime a parent has concerns about a schedule, we need to route them back to school counselors. Because sometimes in that first initial run of schedules, that can happen. We're really hopeful that when we schedule into quarter three, that we're going to allow some more access to some electives and things as well. So we've been working with our caps on that as well. And then the question around, do we talk to coaches? We've been working through our athletic directors who have a pretty good sense of what coaches can and cannot do. The question came up around, can't we have kids practice during the day when they don't have synchronous classes? And a lot of our coaches are teaching during the day. So every school is a little different in how they can navigate different times. And and they have to work with their coaches to do it. Our coaches are dying to get kids back on the field. And then when we went ahead and paused our athletics, we were gearing up for that indoor season. And part of that decision was around, we knew we were going to have fifty sixty kids at a gym in order. So that's part of the reason we put the pause to regroup with Marion County to let the rest of the metrics or the guidelines come out about outdoor activities.
I think we need to, for the sake of time, we need to see if there's any quick question before we move on to the next aspect. You know, these are good questions. You please keep bringing it up and then maybe we can pool all these questions and
There is a really good question that Director Blassey just popped in the chat. If we could answer that one, that would be great.
Go ahead. If we prioritize K three returns, will there also be capacity to prioritize students at risk of failing classes?
So when we say prioritize K three, that means to move into blended learning. That means our metrics will have to be below a hundred. But the the strategy around kids that are failing is to get as much limited in person as possible. So that's why limited in person is also our priority. We saw that very effectively when kids were struggling across the high schools at the end of quarter one.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry. I think we're going to not have enough time for other questions. These are all very good questions, you know. It's a lot of our parents are having this. So we're going to quickly go into the next aspect of our agenda. And this section is for public comments. This public comment is for items directly related to the board meeting agenda. We set aside half an hour total time will be designated for this section. Each person is allowed three minutes to address the board. Additional three minutes is allowed for translation to English if needed. Please state your first and last name and I believe the place of residence for your record. And so with that, I'm going to ask Ms. McDaniel to coordinate. I believe we're going to start with three video presentations. And then we'll open it up for telephone calling.
Correct.
And that pretty much, that's all we'll have time. We won't have time for other written submissions. And some of the written submissions will be made available on the website, so please check that. So I will ask Alice to text me to make sure we keep track of the time and Miss McDaniel, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Chair Shonda Gary, Superintendent Perry, Board Directors. Erin, do we have the first video queued?
Yeah, so we have five videos that were sent in on agenda topics, so that takes up about twelve minutes. So if it sounds good, I'll go ahead, hit play.
Okay, hi, my name is Jeff Tiffany. My son and daughter both attend Spreg High School. And I'm talking to you today about the CDL and how it plays out for us and our family. My background is a nonprofit leader at out of Olingle Pool for about nine years. And I was also a certified teacher before I decided to stop that to raise children. And now I'm a realtor in the Salem community. The way that we do CDL in my house is I have access to, I brought my computer up here, so I'll show you this. I have access to Parent View, which I look at regularly. I also have access to Matthew's Canvas page, and I also have access to Emma's Canvas page. Without my direct involvement in looking at their actual things that they have to do, they would have probably Ds and Fs across the board for sure. One of the things that I am lucky enough to do is I'm able to be home, put some of my career on hold in order to basically act like a teacher in the house for those two to get their work done. I guess the biggest thing I would say about CDL is that the teachers have to put the work out there and they have to get it graded and they have to, you know, move forward because that's that's what we're mandated to do. But I would say that if these kids, my kids in general, were in school, then things like my kids go to the teacher after school, they go to the teacher during lunch, they might ask for clarification on a lesson. And that simply, those kinds of organic interactions don't happen with CDL. So if Matthew, for example, has a question about geometry, he has to text his teacher in a comment field on Canvas. His teacher gets back to him maybe a day later, maybe a couple of minutes later, we don't know. It's, you know, his teachers are doing a fantastic job. But this is not a long term solution to learning. Matthew would be in honors classes, but you know, trying to get that done and trying to be part of the honors system when it's embedded is also something that doesn't really mean much with CDL because it's essentially another assignment. Whereas if it were in school, it would be, hey, you know, it's an honors level class, it's an everyday interaction with the teacher. So I would implore the school district to to school leaders, the the board, you're the only ones that can do this, is to think about positive ways.
Hello, my name is Matthew Ensine. I go by Matt, like the photo finish.
Hello, my name is Matthew Ensine. I go by Matt, like the photo finish. Um. I use they/them pronouns and I will be reading a poem that I wrote on, at the request of Loose. Um, I'm extremely busy, so apologies if this isn't the um best piece of poetry I've ever written. But I think it's important to engage in this. I imagine a world where you aren't scared of abolition. I envision a future where equitable education is the only mission. Of schools that are no longer constructed from white revisionist knowledge that speaks truth to power, that gives equal access up through college, that embraces the power of community indifference, that shows up when called upon to make transformative decisions, that establish the future we hold in our minds, the youth contain worlds, yet you're repressing their shine. And it's becoming a bit frustrating that my one biggest fear is that you'll never free these kids that you've held down for years, won't listen to their stories, won't respect them as equal. Instead, you hide behind your colonizing steeple. It's no secret you won't bar the racists who sit as pillars on your board. You embody epistemic violence and your inability to reject hatred is absurd. Thank you.
Chair Shandra Giri, members of the board, my name is Jim Shepke. I live in Salem and I wish to comment on the Agenda Item eight C, which, if approved tonight, would create a situation in which the Chair of the Board, and I quote, "Need not accept comments that are derogatory," end quote. I'm amazed that this proposal from the Board Chair would even be considered. Merriam Webster defines derogatory as, quote, "expressive of a low opinion, disparaging," end quote. We teach our students to revere the U.S. Constitution. The thing that has really made our country great and not the current occupant of the White House, as some of you seem to think. We teach our students to revere the First Amendment, a model for the world, which states that no law shall be made that abridges freedom of speech. So what are our students to think if the school board adopts a policy that would restrict my First Amendment rights to express a low opinion of the board? Since you may do that tonight, and this may be my last chance to express my low opinions, I will take this opportunity to do so. Here are just some of the low opinions I have of this board. I have a low opinion of Director Kylo for his blackface stunt that is unforgivable. I have a low opinion of Director Goss for questioning the need to provide food to hungry children. I have a low opinion of Director Hyun for inviting white supremacists to campaign for her in the last election. I have a low opinion of Director Bethel for taking over a hundred thousand dollars from Oregon Right to Life to help her buy a seat on the Marion County Commission. I have a low opinion of Director Lipold for his position on the board, for using his position on the board to take a junket to Mar-a-Lago to hang out with Donald and Eric Trump. Finally, I have a low opinion of Director Chandragiri for a lack of leadership in failing to end the racist School Resource Officer Program, which hundreds of students, parents, teachers, and support staff have been pleading with you for years to do. There, I got it done. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Julianne Jackson. I am a Salem Kaiser School alumni and parent. Um, and I just wanted to speak on the agenda topics of reimagining school discipline as well as uh the public comment issue. Um, while I understand that it may be difficult for folks to uh, to hear what the public has to say, I think it's even more so difficult for uh the students of color that are being ignored when they make them. I think that um had uh there been any movement, um, had there been anything other than attempts to divide different communities um and to speak over students or um not listen to them. I don't think that uh the public comments would have taken the turn that they have taken. Um, so that's number one. I think number two, um, you are a public body. Um, so the fact that you are even considering limiting public comment is ludicrous. Um, you are also uh, you know, elected by your community and I think that we have every right to um, you know, to tell you what we need to tell you. Um, and, and further, I don't think telling the truth about particular board members and their associations with white supremacy in our community um are out of line. And if that bothers you, perhaps you should not be um taking part in that. Uh, perhaps um that shouldn't be something that can be traced back to you. Um, so that's my first portion. Uh, the second portion is when we're talking about reimagining discipline. I think we can uh very safely say that removing SROs is a huge step and, step in what reimagining discipline looks like. I think when we're talking about behavior specialists, we're talking about um, you know, uniformed officers in schools, uh, we are talking about heavier, um, I guess, for lack of a better term, um disciplinary action um for children of color. Um, you know, the first step would be to remove those who would arrest children um in schools. Um, and to, you know, start making it to where, you know, if there is no victim, um, the school district is not able to press charges um unless there is some, some crime directly against the school itself. Um, so those are just my thoughts on that. Um, the SRO issue is, is not gone, it is not forgotten. Um, and you owe it to the public to listen to their comments. That is your job. Um, so please, uh, please understand that and take that into careful consideration when moving forward. Thank you.
My name is Clifford Ifler Rodriguez and I'm a parent in the district. I'm testifying on the Agenda Item regarding the safety update. As a district and as a school board, you have failed to heed, heed the community and continue to put obstacles uh in regards to resolving the question about school resource officers. It's been clear and shared with you that school resource officers are detriment to this community and its students. Yet you continue not to heed the community's plea to invest instead of school resource officers into other programs and positions that will help uplift, help care for our children. You have violated the trust of the community and continue to hinder their ability to speak and hold sway over what happens to their children when we release them into the district's care. For this, both the school board and district personnel, including Superintendent Perry, are responsible and will be held accountable. For those on the school board, your positions luckily come with term limits and you will be replaced by those who are willing to work with the community in good faith and without ego. Uh, it's so sad that it's come to this, that we continually, over the years and throughout these intense months, continue to plead with some idea that you as a school board will listen. Only enough is enough. Get SROs out of schools. It's as simple as that.
Daniel, now we have some callers, will you please?
Yeah. So our first caller is Melissa. And she's in the meeting.
Lisa, welcome.
Hello.
Lisa, go ahead, tell us. State your first and last name and place of residence.
My name is, my name is Melissa Rodriguez and I'm a Salem resident. I'm an educator in the district and I'll be discussing a few of the agenda items. First, the land acknowledgement you did earlier and its correlation with the proclamation. You sign yet do no real action to keep your word and abide by said proclamation. The proclamations and land acknowledgement are just like the unhonored treaties your ancestors signed with native tribes. It is just for show so that in the future on paper, it says that you are, you are a part of the bright side of history, which in this community, we know you are not. In your reimagining school discipline document, you said, quote, "We need to listen deeply to our students and families, particularly our students of color." So my question to the board and to my colleagues who consider themselves anti-racist is, what have you been doing this whole time? To those of us who have been active in the fight um to take SROs out, it seems like you are just filling out your performative anti-racist bingo card by checking off items such as participating in book clubs and having a Black Lives Matter sign in your yard or attending perhaps one Black Lives Matter rally. Black Lives Matter does not just mean advocating for those who are murdered in the hands of a white supremacist. It means protecting black lives that are still here by dismantling racism, sexism, classism, colorism, and capitalism because black liberation equates to liberation for all. Yet while the school, school board and the staff that stood by and swiveled their fingers and watched as youth were pushed aside for fighting to take out a racist system out of our schools, four black members of Oregon were killed in the past three months. One was a teenager who a white man felt that the, he had the right to kill because he didn't like the volume of the music on the kids in the teenager's car. This board creating yet another hoop and expect BIPOC youth to jump through is disrespectful and dismissive. Create another listening session that's forcing you to relive their trauma. None of you are therapists and, or at least good ones at that. And you don't need to rehear repeated trauma. No adult who wants to create a safe and welcoming place for children would expect them to relive their trauma over and over again because you, the adults, did not care to listen the first time. Educators are mandatory reporters and in our trainings to report, we are told to get all the details the first time and to not force a child to relive their trauma again and again. Yet here, each of you are advocating for that. That is ridiculous. Every question that is in the journey to safe and welcoming schools has already been answered and backed up with data. But you, like anyone else who has not been active in dismantling the system, don't like those answers because deep down you agree that black and brown bodies need to be policed. If you attempt to say SRO stops school shootings, look at the demographics of the school shooters. They are not black nor are they brown. Yet that's where the, that's where the SROs are at our schools that are predominantly black and brown. And if you proceed with this listening sessions, like I expect you will, you will need to put educators like myself who are on it, that board and not, who will, who will not be a yes ma'am on it. Also, in closing, justice for Vanessa Guillen and the countless others who are sexually assaulted and murdered by another racist system you allow in our schools.
All right, thank you. Daniel, who's the next person, please?
Or do we have another caller, Erin?
Yeah, we have um quite a few callers. So the next one is Sarah, so.
Sarah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sarah Rohrs. I live in Salem. I will make a statement and then read a poem that I wrote. I'm here to urge you to reject the Board Chair's proposed amendment regarding public comment. Agenda Item eight C. This amendment puts the public on the notice that the Board Chair could decide what comments are civil and respectful and which ones are not. It also limits criticism of named employees and board members. It should be rejected sa- soundly as an attempt to silence your critics and to highlight free speech rights protected by law. Your own attorney has warned the board of this as well, as well. By its timing, this amendment is an obvious response to youth of color and board critics who have spoken to you repeatedly over the last few months. Rather than listen to them, you propose to ignore or enclose the door. The Board Chair already has the power to ask that public comments be civil and respectful. And the Chair has already used, some might say abused, his power to cut speakers off. So why do you need this amendment? Listening to critical comments and being called out is uncomfortable, but so what? That is part of the job you have of being adults in leadership positions. As elected officials, you are charged with earning public trust and you must set yourself high standards. This is the pact you made when elected. You need courage to listen with generosity, compassion, and open minds and hearts to those who come before you speaking of how they have been harmed and what they need. These are the students you have been elected to serve. That is the only way, true way to get ahead. And now my poem. Who speaks? Who listens? I pledge allegiance to words in any language, to words that are rough, come through unbaked, falter and fee here sing, to words like barbed wire and not in high blades saying, "We've been wronged, we are angry, we hurt." I pledge allegiance to flags of free speech that unfurl in our constitution, in our schools, in public arenas. And I salute those who protect these, these rights, encouraging each individual to rip off their behindings and speak their truth. I pledge allegiance to the listeners who hear without judgment, who place their hands on their hearts and commit to finding the urge to accept with one hand and hold the torch of justice high with the other. I pledge allegiance to brave ancestors who fought before us. In their honor, I pledge to be proud and be healed in the land of the free, under love, indivisible, with acceptance and belonging for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
Sure. Our next caller is Patrice. So let me see. Patrice, please go ahead.
Good evening, Superintendent Perry and members of the school board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. You begin every meeting by pledging your allegiance to the U.S. flag, a symbol to sum of hope, of opportunity, of freedom. Imagine starting your meeting with a pledge to serve the needs of all students of this district. Students who represent opportunity and hope for the future. Imagine removing SROs from the Salem Kaiser Schools as part of reimagining school discipline. Research tells us that students are not safer with place in schools. The lived experience of students of color tell us there are more danger of being singled out and disciplined for behavior that is within the range of normal for white students. They are more likely to end up in the juvenile justice system. This is a mental health issue. Their very presence is unwelcoming to some, and this is clearly wrong. You wish to stifle freedom of speech for students and this community. But just because you silence voices does not mean injustice disappears. You talk about unity. Unity can only occur when truth is shared, harm and injustice are acknowledged, and efforts are made to rectify the harm. You approve many proclamations, including the Safe and Welcoming Schools Resolution, the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Proclamation, Hispanic Heritage Month, and Native American Heritage, Native American Heritage Month most recently. And yet some of your actions are not in alignment with these proclamations. You are concerned about mental health issues in students' life. And yet in 2017, the school board refused to take a stand against ballot measure one oh five, that would have ended Oregon's sanctuary state status. I heard students speak about fear for themselves and their families. And yet you chose your politics over the physical and mental well-being of these students. This caused great harm. Imagine if all students truly felt they belonged and knew their voices mattered. Imagine if they were all respected and that school was a safe and welcoming environment for all and compassion for their rights as human beings was the norm. Imagine all students thriving and reaching and striving to reach their full potential. When that happens, you might get the unity you hoped for. Just imagine. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
Next caller is Brett, so.
Brett, do you mind sharing your first and last name and place?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please, Brett, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Brett Stoner Osborne. I am a resident of Salem, Oregon. And my comments for tonight are in regards to Action Item eight C. Uh, the, to approve the revision of language, uh, to set parameters for public comments. Um, in plain English, I would first like to just say that the reason for my call is I would like every single member of the board to unanimously vote against a measure that I view as inherently abhorrent and undemocratic. And further express that, I would like to recite a poem. Salem Kaiser School Board, S K S B. A group with a responsibility to serve our diverse community. Paul Kylo wore blackface back in March, an action that made me want to barf. Marty Hyon knows the three percenters, a white supremacist group of which she, or at least her husband, is a known member. White supremacy has no business on this board. These members should have resigned long before we had to call and email, cry and beg our elected officials to do their jobs. To stop putting cops in schools and kids in prison, we're asking you to build a better system. But instead of doing what is right, you ignore our voices, you ignore our plight. And now you dare to set parameters to public comment, the clearest way for us to get your attention? They say silence is violence. Well, now you're violently silencing us. So if you claim to care about equity, if you value free speech and the input of your community, then show us today that we actually are birds of the same feather and vote against this oppressive, insensitive, and racist measure. Thank you for your time. Once again, please vote no on agenda item eight C.
Thank you very much. Erin, who is our next caller, please?
Yeah, our next caller is Jessica. Jessica, if you could unmute, it would be appreciated.
Jessica, let us know your first, last name in place.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Davidson, and I am a Kaiser resident. Chairman Satya Chandra Giri, vice chair Danielle Bethel, and Salem Kaiser School Board members. I support the agenda item eight C. The abuse you all have faced is immeasurable. Thank you to our school board for staying strong and serving your community. I also support the safety our SROs offer our kids in our schools. I am a parent of two former Salem Kaiser students as of approximately three weeks ago. We have loved our school family and will miss them dearly. CDL Learning was not working for our family. I called the school district offices multiple times, in which I never received a call back from. I also spoke with our school principal multiple times. Sorry, my little girl's in the background, trying to find solutions to help my students, and I appreciate him more than words can express. After many failed attempts of trying to make it work, and with the issues I saw in Salem Kaiser School District's curriculum, our family has taken the plunge of homeschooling. I hope parents are paying very close attention to the unbalanced and biased narrative, also known as curriculum, that is being handed to our teachers to try and teach our kids in an unbiased manner. CDL Learning is also leaving students behind, two that I know of in my own neighborhood, and I'm sure there are many more. It is truly heartbreaking. I hope that you can get students back in school very soon. This CDL Learning is not equitable in any way, shape, or form. Let our focus go back to educating our students without bias and helping them graduate and be successful in life. It is sad to say that our family will likely not return unless there are some major adjustments made. Last but not least, as far as surveys regarding our children's health, well-being, and it being given to our students, vision screenings and dental tech should be an opt-in option, not an opt-out option. Most parents don't get informed before these things and services are given to our students without our permission. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Erin, I guess we have time for about one or two more calls.
Okay, next caller is Cindy.
Hello?
Cindy, go ahead. Tell us your first name. Share your first name, last name, please.
Um, my name is Cindy. I'm not gonna be able to share my last name and my residence because I do not feel safe by the people that are on this school board. Um, I am a community member, and this is a poem that I have made for you all. It is titled "The History of S K S D." With handcuffs on his wrists and hands behind his back, the school-to-deportation pipeline crept up on him. Cops pulled him over because of a backpack. They get to do this in and out of school because of a contract. And they caged him, locked him up, and threw away the key. No mercy, tears all around, vision blurry. Stuck in the concrete jungle, not being able to learn how to seek a way out. Feeling drained out, rights being violated while more and more youth get incarcerated. How do you wanna reimagine school discipline when discipline alone should be abolished? Like the white supremacy within the school board should be demolished. The zero tolerance policy. It's a shame to look at all this monstrosity. You refuse to acknowledge the school-to-prison pipeline. Marty, you should resign for putting actual lives on the line. With all this censorship, people getting skipped, hanging up the phone during testimonies. What did you expect? Satya, and then there's Kathy, who wants a what Corvette? But we won't forget, because we're the ones feeling the effects. We're tired of lives being seen as just skin and bones, being disposed, thrown away, hidden under the dirt of dirty politics or performative allyship. Covering up unknown stories, that's all history has taught us. But you can still hear the land cry as it weeps, feeling the pain as bodies die or hidden behind the gray walls of a prison. Rights being violated while more and more youth get incarcerated. You're killing me with your white, you're killing us with your white supremacy. When our intention is to get free, we can't breathe, but we guarantee there will be a future without SROs and S K S D. And I want to say something else real quick. Someone had mentioned earlier that the process of SROs is not about you, the board, but it is about the future children of this district. And I would agree with that. Yeah, it is. And that's why you all shouldn't have kicked out BIPOC students who are directly impacted by the school-to-prison pipeline from the said student task force. It is very deeply unsettling and evil of you to show pictures of black and brown children playing while you are all putting their lives at risk. None of you know what it's like to have someone you love be ripped away from you because of incarceration. You don't know what it's like to sit with that every day of your life. You don't know what that trauma does to you. But I know, and a lot of community members and students do know. And I can guarantee you that we will show up to all school board meetings, even if we have to wait more than three hours to testify like we did tonight. If it means that one, that no one else would ever have to feel the effects of incarceration and the school-to-prison pipeline.
Thank you very much. Who is our next? Well, I think we have time for one more caller. Is that right?
So our next caller is Louise.
Please hang up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, and this is the last caller. So go ahead, tell us, share your first and last name and place, and then.
Firstly, I want to say that to end the calls right now, you shouldn't even do that. You made the community wait three hours for us to submit public testimonies. You all should listen to all of the other testimonies that are here today and to silence us, to silence our testimonies, to try to cut us off. It just goes to show the oppression that the school board holds. So I want to start this by saying, if you don't know what oppression means or how this racist white supremacist school board is maintaining oppression, then that's embarrassing. If you're a person of color selling themselves out and doing Christie Perry's dirty laundry work, then that's embarrassing too. Now I'm gonna start my poem. The school board is trying to silence my voice because white supremacy doesn't like brown and black noise. Since 1492, we've been battling oppression because people such as Satya don't ever stop to listen. Trying to suppress us because of power and control and infringing on our First Amendment rights without our choice. Never shown respect, the school board never has been civil. Just take a look at Marty Hyon, she's a three percenter. And Kathy Gosford rather have her best than feed her kids. And Paul Kylo did black this year, a whole school board would be. This whole school board is racist, filled with white supremacist lies. And all of it's uplifted because Chandra Giri. You're a sellout. You don't represent our communities because real leaders don't silence testimonies. It's been a hectic year and the year's about to end, but the fight will always live because anti-racism is not a trend. And again, I want to say you should listen to all testimonies. The whole community is watching, and we all know how you all are trying to suppress us.
All right, I think we set aside thirty minutes for the agenda items. And all others who wanted to share their poetry and testimony, please submit a written testimony. We will make sure that it is posted in the website and it is shared with all our board members. So I think we need to proceed with our action items that we have. And we're gonna start with the next item is a vote for member of the Oregon School Board Association, Board of Directors, position 11 Marion County. And we're gonna ask, you know, that we have two candidates. Director Leepold from our school board and Chair, or Vice Chair Bill Group from also joined us. And he's also mayor of Jervis and Vice President of Color Caucus of Oregon School Board Association. So here's how we'll do. We have submitted the background and written background, and all the board members have it. I'm going to ask if each of you can take about two minutes. He had set aside about three minutes. We're gonna cut it to two minutes and answer the question that has been given to you. How will you advocate for all students as part of Oregon School Board Association? If you get elected as the Board of Directors? And after both complete their testimony, then I will take a motion to proceed with the voting. And then we'll have a brief discussion, and then we'll vote, and then I'll hand it over to Mr. Paul Decarples, who will run this election. So we'll start with Mr. Bill Group, and then we'll come to our director, Leepold. So we'll start with our guest first.
Okay. Uh, thank you Chair Chandra Giri, Superintendent Perry, and board members for this opportunity to address the Salem Kaiser School Board. My name is Bill Grob, and I am hoping to represent the Marion region on the OSBA Board of Directors. I'm the current vice chair of the North Marion School Board, a district with about 1,750 students and just over 200 employees. I've had the honor of representing the Oregon School Board Member Color Caucus as president for the last two years. This has been a great experience for me as I brought the caucus into formal existence and created a brand of service the caucus provides for Oregon education policy. As I term limited out on the leadership position, I would like to continue in a leadership role representing education districts of Marion County. I humbly ask for your district's vote for this election. In my leadership role in Oregon education, I have engaged with districts as large as Salem Kaiser, while also giving the guest lecture at Imbler High School, a very small district with 350 students in Union County, and worked with districts all in between those ranges. I've worked with high school students in the field of CTE career pathways, business education, and racial equity. I've engaged with the Willamette ESD as a member of their budget committee. My years at the North Marion School Board have been a learning experience, including superintendent searches, administration reorganization, budget prioritization, and the successful capital bond campaign generating over $54 million for our district. Additionally, I'm serving on the Educator Advancement Council for the governor, representing school boards and the investment in teachers and administrators in the state of Oregon. My commitment is to working on innovative and changing models of education for the state of Oregon. My engagement with the education boards in our local region have fulfilled my need to give back to the community that I live in. My volunteerism in CTE programs such as Oregon Future Business Leaders of America, North Marion Coding Club, as well as working with students on racial relations and equity-based education, gives my life meaning. I'm working towards making this world a better place for all students. To conclude, I believe I can provide leadership and direction at the OSBA board level utilizing all my experience over forty years in industry and ten years in public governance. I was also a mayor for five and a half years and currently serve in the city of Aurora on their planning commission and goal-setting teams. My goal is to continue innovating, educating pedagogy, and improving diverse cultural and economic relations to better lead, to lead to better outcomes for all students. It would be my honor to represent our region at the state level. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, thank you. Director Leepold, now it's your turn to please share your vision.
Sure. I mean, first, I would like to thank Bill for coming out here. I just want to say first off, you know, my fellow candidate, Bill and I, we're good friends. I think he's a good and honorable man. And I know that no matter who gets the honor of filling the seat, our county is gonna be better off for it. I just want to say that for me, I hope to earn your vote for three reasons. One, I bring a fresh perspective and an open mind. And second, I'm gonna work harder than everybody else in the room and work in a collaborative way that hasn't been done before for the Marion County region. And then three, of course, I'm in this for the right reasons, and I have a plan. So first off, you know, I grew up in Marion County, born in Salem Hospital. I mean, a lot of you know me already, so I'm not gonna go too deep into that. But I fight for and represent a vast, a vast portion of our students that are often unheard. When it comes to students that have been homeless, who have gone through our foster care system, who have grown up without parents due to incarceration, who are Native American, who are on and on, just like each of us, you know, represents a different, come from different backgrounds. And so I bring, well, I don't think that's a reason you need to elect me. I think that those perspectives are fresh and new and often not heard in education tables, especially at the state level. Second is, and so just by who I am, I bring a fresh perspective that's not normally heard, and especially for my age. I'm actively engaged and involved in our local community at McKay High School, where I build relationships with a lot of the youth there. In fact, I'm paid by Willamette as a tutor, where I'm tutoring students through these hard times as another way to engage with students. And then I come from Cascade High School. That's where I graduated. So I have a really close relationship with a lot of the rural schools because we played them in sports. And through OSBA meetings, I have really good relational ways, relations with other districts. And that's how I'm gonna approach this role. So my, my plan is I want to create a collaborative environment where I reach out to each of the ten districts that serve in Marion County. I want to get your insights and your thoughts because I don't think that I know everything. But something I tell a lot of people is I know a guy who does. And so I'm gonna be reaching out to each of you when stuff comes up, letting people know what's coming down the pipe from the state level as well as getting input from each of you and from other districts of which I've already built relationships with over the last three years as a school board director. And using those relationships and keeping constant communication between the two so we can all work together as we're addressing tough things like race, as we're talking about school discipline. Because what's best for us isn't necessarily what's best for the next district and vice versa. And so I want to work hard to ensure that we're listening to everybody, every voice is heard, and that we're representing both urban and rural districts. Now, for me, as far as me being in it for the reasons, you know, my political career begins and ends with school board because beyond my next term, I'm hoping to serve on the school board. I don't really seek any other further political office. I just want to see our community grow and thrive and give students the opportunity to succeed. And I believe that by me creating a collaborative environment between all of the districts within our region as well as being a voice that's often unheard, probably being the only one under fifty on the OSBA board, bringing a perspective that's not often heard of at, at that level. And so I ask for your vote, and I know that no matter what happens, that our county is gonna be better off.
Thank you, Director Leepold. You know, is there a motion to proceed with this election?
Uh, Board Chair Chandra Giri, I don't know that we need a motion to.
Well, then that makes it very easy. I'm gonna hand it over to Paul Decarples, and that makes it so much easier. Thank you, Mr. Decarples.
Thank you. We're getting better at virtual elections. And so if you have a piece of paper to write the last name of your preferred candidate, we've also used text message to me if you have trouble with, with writing on something, and I'm open to that if, if it's okay with the board chair. If you'd like to. If you'd like to text me your your answer, your vote. But it's up to the board chair.
Mr. Decapulis, can we do both? Those who want to share in front of the camera and those who want to text because some of them may be joining via cell phone, I believe.
It was fine with me. It's 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 up to you. I'm
Yes, it's okay with me to have both modalities. We will try to welcome your electoral participation in more than one way.
The the idea is just to do it simultaneously, so. When you're ready.
Vice Chair Bethel, are you there?
Yeah, but if I turn my video on, I'm going to get kicked out. So I'm
Okay, okay, okay.
I'm ready to send a text.
All right.
Okay. I have not received it, but I have received a text from Director Hyen, Director Blasi and Director Bethel. So anyone else? Okay, let me try to record this. Director Kylo votes for for Leopold. Director Chandragiri for Mr. Grob. Director Goss for Leopold. Director Leopold for Director Leopold. And then the other three I have Director Bethel for Leopold. And then I have, let's see. Director Hyen abstains. And then Director Blasi for Mr. Grob. So four votes for Director Leopold is a majority.
Congratulations, Director Leopold.
Thank you, guys. I really
Mr. Grob, Bill Grob, I really appreciate you coming and joining us and we wanted to make it a fair process so both of you had a chance to meet.
My honor, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you very much. You are allowed to stick around. We still have Yeah, go ahead, Jesse.
Okay, so Bill and I, when we were when this first was going down, we both were, I knew the other one was running it or planning to. And so once we did, once both of our hats were in the ring, we we talked to each other and we decided that this is a great opportunity for us to show how two people can apply from the same position, you know, and and go for it and still be civil, still be friends and still work through things. And I think I want to thank Bill for for coming to speak here and also I just think it's kind of cool that we're able to go through this process and still come out in a healthy and collaborative way. So thank you, Bill, and thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you very
Definitely. No problem. Appreciate the time.
Go to Action eight B. Approve the Oregon School Board Association Resolution to adopt the OSBA twenty twenty one, twenty one, twenty two legislative priorities and principles as recommended by Legislative Policy Committee. So moved. Anybody second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? The proposal to approve the OSBA resolution, as I read, was moved by Director Kylo and seconded by Director Leopold. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, hearing no discussion, I'll be ready to take a vote. Director Kylo.
Aye.
Director Leopold.
Aye.
Director Blasi.
Aye.
Director Goss. You have to aye, is that what you said? All right, Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
Director Hyen.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So I think it passes unanimously. Yes, Fred. So we're going to the next eight C. Eight C, we had a frustrating last time in the last board meeting, approve the revision of the language in Board Governance Policy eleven, Board Operation Item Six, to define Board Chair's authority to set parameters to public comment. So we had discussed this, we had read this. And Director Bethel, do you mind reading just the amendment if you can? That way it will help me.
You want me to read just the amendment?
Yeah, just the amendment of the language that
Oh, just the red line language?
Yeah, the red line one because my other computer broke, ran out of battery.
Okay, the board chair can ask the public comment be civil, respectful, and does not lead to a situation of vitriolic communication, threats or intimidation towards each other or cause any safety concerns in our community for our students, educators, staff, school board members, or their families, or anyone else, and need not accept comments that are obscene, derogatory, name-calling, racist, threatening, or direct criticism of named employees.
So this is the amendment that we wanted to introduce. And, you know, so I just wanted to know, we had a very detailed discussion in the last board meeting during our first reading. Is there a motion to approve this as stated? Who who moved? Dr. Goss, is that you?
I moved that we approved the motion.
Okay, is there anybody seconded?
I second it.
Okay, Director Goss moves the motion and Director Hyen seconds the motion to make that revision to BG eleven, Board Operations Item Six. Any discussion on this? This is an important decision, so it would be nice if we can, if any last, we had a thorough discussion, but I would like to know if there is any discussion now. We will start with Director Blasi. Then we'll come to Director Goss.
Yeah, I know, we we talked about this last time and my position hasn't changed. And I've I've approached the chair about the the need for this. Or the you know, I I I just, I don't know, I I struggle with what to say after we we hear public comment about how the community feels about this. I just it it just reinforces our community's concern that the board isn't listening. And I I think that you know, that the chair has asked the public to be more respectful. And and I appreciate that, you know, tonight's callers. Although there were, you know, comments directed at board members, as is their right. I think that the community has listened and taken, you know, somewhat of a different approach. I I appreciate the innovation this evening in offering public comment via poetry. I thought that was very unique and but but we're still in a situation where the community feels as though this act, in addition to others over the last several months, just continues to be at odds with the message that the board is trying to communicate that we want to listen, we want to move this community forward. And I just, I would ask my fellow board members to really, really, really think about how you vote on this this evening and what kind of message does that send? I think that our community has listened. And I don't think that this is necessary. And in fact, I think it's, you know, it just goes against what we're what we're trying to accomplish in the community. So I would ask that we we not approve this and if at some point we need to revisit, we could do that, but I just think that this sends a very, very poor message. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Blasi. And Director Goss, you're going to say, add something?
I couldn't hear you.
Were you going to add any to the discussion?
I have, well, I have not been in a position to have lots of the community approach me and ask me not to vote in favor of this. So I personally feel that it's warranted and I will vote for it.
Thank you.
Comment.
Okay, Director Hyen, please.
Yeah, I am voting in favor of this. I don't want to silence the community. They have a right to call in and speak. I want to hear from them. There's nothing wrong with asking them to be polite. We're we're human beings with feelings. We're here to serve. But there's no reason to be you know, mean. There just isn't. And this is pretty much the same stuff I was reading when I was chair during our meetings, asking people to be respectful when they're giving testimony. And there is nothing wrong with that. Certainly, that's a requirement when you testify in front of the state legislature. I don't understand why people have a problem with it. But it's not like you're going to probably, you're going to get cut off. It's just be nice. Tell us how you think, but be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Leopold. Do you have? Yeah, Mr. Decapulis, I'll come to you after.
After the after the board comments, I'd like to provide my perspective as your legal counsel, but only the board comments.
Go ahead, go ahead. Director Leopold, you have something to add?
Actually, I would like to hear Mr. Decapulis speak before I give my comment.
Okay. Then Director Vice Chair Bethel, you have anything to add?
No, I support Jesse's ask.
Okay, Director Kylo, do you have anything to add?
I believe that we don't need this, that the chair already has the power to do what this entails.
Thank you.
Been my position for the last two meetings, so it hasn't changed.
Mr. Decapulis.
Thank you. Just echoing Director Kylo, we've we've had for years and years instructions in for public comments that that have not been in a board policy. So this is it's unnecessary from a purely legal perspective. You already, you you give, you give instructions for for comments and over the years, board chairs have exercised some limited discretion in redirecting comments that may have been out of order. The the central problem with trying to define comments that are that are not civil and respectful is the more language we use, the harder it is to not apply our own subjective lens to to the comment. For example, the the word civil and respectful, we could probably get substantial agreement on language that is civil and respectful and language that isn't. I do not know what the phrase that says does not lead to a situation of vitriolic communication, threats or intimidation toward each other or cause any safety concerns in our community. I mean, this is a very broad statement. And and the broader we get, the more this is subject to individual interpretation. So the shorter the better is my advice. And I don't believe this is legally necessary because I think the board chair under the Oregon Public Meeting Law has the ability to regulate an orderly board meeting. I think that any board chair will will be faced with public comments that are at least upsetting. And they will happen so fast within a three-minute time period that you will be left wondering whether that rose to the level of a vitriolic communication or was, excuse me, was derogatory. And so I think these are, these are hard, these are hard decisions that that the First Amendment allows a broad range of speech. And I I just gave some examples two meetings ago that we know that that you can't say certain things according to the the US Supreme Court. But I think how to regulate this in a board meeting may be more problematic than it's worth. And the applying this policy consistently will be a chore. And so you'll need to apply it consistently because if you don't, the the claim will be that you're censoring the message. Messages you like versus messages you don't like. That's what the community is saying. And 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 so you'll, you or any board chair in the future will need to make value judgments that will be challenging for you and could potentially lead to claims of free speech claim. We, I mean, these are, we we've talked about this before and
Yeah.
You've been kind to let me give my perspective on this. But that is my perspective.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate that. I I just wanted to
Chair Chandragiri, can I?
Go ahead, Vice Chair Bethel, go ahead.
So I I appreciate Mr. Decapulis's analysis, I guess, or legal opinion or whatever it is of this. And I I'd like to say that I believe that when I became a board member, there was a lack of transition and support and kind of guiding into processes. And you can read Board Operations and BGs all day long and and at times there's things left out. And I think that this is one of those times where some information is left out, but I also think less is more in in certain cases. And so I'd like to make to make a friendly amendment to the verbiage to simply just say the board chair can ask that the the public comment be civil and need not accept comments that are obscene, derogatory, name-calling, racist, threatening, or direct criticism of named employees because that's the information in the statute. Information none of us knew prior to the original presentation from Mr. Decapulis on that statute. I think that if you dive into that particular sentence that Mr. Decapulis said he didn't even really understand what that means himself, creates a path that not only future chairs are going to have to try to to kind of I suppose wrestle with to define for themselves, but I think the community also doesn't really fully understand what that means. And I fully respect your effort and your investment in this. And I and I do understand from sitting with you on the sidelines and working through this, what your intentions are. But I believe that that there's certain language does need to be added to this BG. I do support that. I just do think it should be shorter. So if you would accept that amendment, I think we can move forward.
Okay, can you state, can you, so do I have to ask for a motion if an amendment is introduced, Mr. Decapulis?
I second it.
Okay, well, before you second it, let's first make sure the amendment is introduced properly, then we can
The the amendment's been moved and seconded, so now there would be discussion on the amendment.
Okay, so let's discuss on the amendment part of it. But I I let me kind of, can I discuss now? Because I didn't get a chance to discuss in the beginning. I'm the chair, let's see. So I I'm going to discuss on the amendment modification, right? That's the modification that Vice Chair Bethel introduced.
So we have an amendment already on the floor. And so I think I either need to withdraw that or accept the correction by Director Bethel. Is that right, Mr. Decapulis?
Well, there's a, you have to, you you have to now there there is an amendment on the floor that's been moved and seconded, so you have to consider that amendment first before you can withdraw the the original. uh, consider that amendment first before you can withdraw the, the original uh motion. So you're on the amendment now and you're at the discussion point on that amendment.
Okay, so who moved, uh, the amendment was moved by?
So be, so before you, before you proceed, we need to make uh very clear again, what is the amendment? And what I have, and I'll state it because I've uh, I have had my computer up. As I understand the amendment would read, the board chair can ask that the public comment be civil and need not accept comments that are obscene, derogatory, name-calling, racist, threatening, or direct criticism of named employees.
Okay.
That's what I understood the amendment to be, Director Battle.
Uh, Vice Chair Battle moves that, and is there a seconding? Anybody seconds that?
That's been moved and seconded.
I did, I seconded it the first time. I introduced it the first time. I think Marty.
Okay, we're gonna open it up for discussion that amendment to the initial motion is going to be up for discussion. Any discussion on that?
Can we repeat that for Sharon real quick? It looks like she, her call dropped.
No, the first one, I didn't, I, now that we have a second amendment, I just, I didn't hear Kath- thank you, Jesse, I didn't hear Kathy's amendment, but I don't think at this point we need to since there's a new amendment. I don't know.
Okay. Director Blaskey, did you hear the new one introduced?
I heard the new one.
Okay, so everybody heard the new one introduced by Vice Chair, which is seconded by Director Gos again. And is there a discussion on the amendment? Director Leopold?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I have, I just wanted to listen to the legalese of this from uh, uh, Mr. Decopoulos and um, I have, with, with this thing in general, right, with the reading, I have, I had an issue with the original and, and even with the amendment. Uh, the amendment's a lot better. Uh, I just, the definition of civil, right, when we're talking about civil, well, we could say with common sense, we understand what civil means. But when you look it up, you know, it means of relating to citizens, now first definition, which doesn't necessarily fit. But then B, second one is adequate in courtesy and politeness, according to Webster. And your, one person's definition of courteous and polite could be different than another. Like, I could view it as not polite for you to talk negatively about me uh in a public meeting, you know, and so while I don't believe that you, Chair Chandra Giri, um, would try to silence people simply because they're talking negatively about you, uh, that does not prevent future boards from doing the same thing. Uh, one thing that I think we hold true in our, in American values is um, you know, deterrence of, of tyranny. And so for me, it's important to uh rein in the powers of, of, of people in power, really. And so with the chair, I don't, I worry that someone could use that as a way to uh, view on what you're not polite, because we see it all around the country, of both sides, people silencing each other. And I don't want to see that uh here on our school board. Um, now, originally, I was going to propose uh an amendment where um, we um were board members, if they view the chair as um trying to silence individuals or using this power inadequately, um, that we could do a point of order. However, Mr. Decopoulos, is that needed? Can't, can't we do a point of order anyway?
Not, I'm not sure I understand your question.
So if a, if a board chair, um, so to speak, um, was to tell a community member as they're speaking that they didn't view their speech as civil, a, as in, they didn't view it as courteous and polite because that person was speaking out, like, just saying they're displeased with them. And if your perception of that is, it's not polite to talk negatively about others, and you decide that they can no longer speak, could another board member bring up a point of order of which we could take action on as a board instead of just the chair to allow that person to speak?
Right, there's parliamentary procedures that could be, that could intervene in that, in that decision. And then you, and then you end up having, um, and I, I'd need to check the Robert's Rules of Orders on this point because it's so rarely used.
Yep.
But there, there, there's a, a, a method by which um, the board can ask uh, the question as, as you've indicated. Uh, I think this just demonstrates uh the well, the subjective nature of, of making these kinds of calls. I, I think that in the most extreme situations, uh, you'd probably have complete agreement on uh, language that was uh outrageous, uh, where there would be no question, but it's the finer points that may lead to some different um conclusions.
But Mr. Decopoulos, thank you very much for clarifying that. I was under the impression that any member could raise a point of order if the board chair gets extreme and starts silencing everybody. That ability is there with any of the board members. I just want to see if there's any other discussion on the amendment introduced by Vice Chair Battle. Yeah, then I have, Director Blassey, you're gonna say something, then I have to share my point of view. Vice Chair Battle, go ahead.
I'm sorry, what, what are you wanting from me?
Now, who, who raised the hand next? Okay, Director Blassey, go ahead, sorry. Director Blassey, go ahead, sorry.
No, I, I appreciate the amendment, however, again, I, I don't think that institutionalizing this is necessary. That this still continues to send a wrong message um at a time when we're trying to heal our community. I think this just goes against that. So I, again, I appreciate an amendment, but I think that, you know, there's been conversations this evening about power and taking power and sharing power and giving power. I think that this takes power, unfortunately, um, instead of recognizing that um, a board chair has the ability and the authority to um, conduct and hold and lead uh, meetings that are, are civil. I think that that's already within your authority. I think that this, however, sends a message of um, taking additional power from our communities that are saying that we're not listening, so um, I, I can't support the amendment either. Thank you.
Now, if there's no other discussion, I want to kind of share something, if that's all right. Jesse, you, let me, please, and then probably the end if you have time. Director Gos, you had something to add, or can I go ahead?
Well, yes, I do. So I don't believe that our that our meetings are getting better than they have been, and by better, I mean are put in, you can say all kinds of things, and you can say them nicely or calmer or better than we have been hearing, and I don't care, you know? Negative for positive. I want it in a manner that is acceptable. It's acceptable to people that are, are hearing it over and over again. And if we do nothing else, then I assume it will just continue as it has for what, months? And I, I don't particularly like that, and I'm sure I'll take great criticism by people saying, well, you just don't want negative. Well, I don't mind negative at all, but I, I mind some of the things that have been said in the last several months. And I would tend to um, withdraw my motion, which I can, we haven't voted on it. I would tend to withdraw my motion in favor of Danielle's if that's easier to defend, frankly.
Thank you, Dr. Director Gos. I just want to kind of share a, a point of view. You know, to start with, I want to say, I want to thank the L U S student and many in our community who have raised awareness of an important issue. We shouldn't forget that. They raised an important issue of our students ending up in criminal justice system. But I want to be very clear on the record that this decision to amend the BG eleven was never to silence anyone, nor it is because of anybody in the community. I believe people should participate as apathy and antipathy is both harmful for our republic. That's my position. I want to be very clear that this decision is because of us. It was one of us board members who wrote an email attempting what I thought was the chair's ability to conduct this business meeting in an orderly manner. I really want to go back and make sure our community is completely aware of it. I'm very sure that was never the intention of one of us. They were doing their best to advocate for a section of our community that was really hurting and suffering, and I truly believe that as well. However, the end result was, it started to cause significant safety concerns. I felt like it was walking into a domestic violence relationship every time I sit in this board meeting where words were hurtful. It was like walking on eggshell. Our ability to even bring up or entertain an alternative point of view was completely stifled. You just mentioned something, and that was, would lead to a new problem. Even though we were aware of an issue, I, it was very difficult to understand all the underlying factors and the steps we needed to really dwell in to find a solution. As a chair, it is really important to run a business meeting in an orderly manner. And also to ensure my, our board members feel safe to bring up important and difficult questions without feeling that they're being threatened, intimidated, or silenced, or part of their sentence is used in a very da- uh, negative way, completely sometimes out of context. It was important to create an atmosphere where rest of the community would feel safe to ask questions in the public section, public comment section, without fear of being doxxed, threatened, humiliated, or misunderstood. This has been going on for twelve months, eleven months. I had to reach many BIPOC community members and community leaders and other community leaders who felt safer to meet me outside the board meeting. I really want our community to completely understand that. They were very generous enough to spend many, many hours with me and help me understand the issues at a deeper level, which I was not able to get it done in the business meeting. They, because they felt safer to share outside than in the business meeting and public comment. You know, there were some members, they had to really withdraw their students from the school district because they felt they were being silenced from asking questions. It was not the design, I want community to know, it was not anybody's design like that. Nobody meant that way. But that, they felt that their concerns were not being able to be brought up. I felt our board members were working long hours outside the board meeting. We are put in hours and hours outside the board meeting. We should have been done in the board meeting to understand the complex issues. And we had very courageous conversation and important questions, but they were all brought up outside the board meeting. Nobody, I mean, they didn't feel safe to bring it up. Board's chairs' ability to hold an orderly meeting was undermined. And because of which, you know, especially a question was asked, where is it in the policy that keys boards' chairs' ability to moderate public comment or hold orderly meeting? It is at that point in time that I had to, we had to really introduce this concept. The changes introduced in the policy, the standard expectation, as Mr. Decopoulos explained it in our nation, consistent with the law, it's Robert's rules of conducting a business. Even without amendment, the board chair has a duty and obligation to hold a public meeting, which was not possible. The meetings were getting dragged on for five, six hours with nothing to show at the end of the day. You know, it baffles me to even have a policy on civility in public this office. But I'm, at least in the process, we got to do some due diligence. We discussed this in the community. You know, as leaders, we cannot become barrier to those we are leading. We must be really mindful of our conduct. This is also applicable to me. We have to be thoughtful of what we say. We shouldn't, without realizing, end up, you know, making it harder for those who are hurting in the community. We cannot come in the way of ourselves from asking important question. If our board members don't feel safe to ask important questions, that makes a difference in the lives of our students, or don't feel safe to speak up and ask honest question, or all the time having to be politically correct or appease somebody or other, I don't know what kind of orderly meeting is that. Or ch- community is hurting, and we need to create a safe space to listen to other difficulties. What happens to our kids? When are they going to be coming back? Teachers are struggling emotionally. What kind of future? That's what we heard. But nobody is able to come up and share those things because they don't feel safe. So this is the reason I really ask you to kindly support, even with the amendment that was introduced by uh, Vice Chair Battle. It is not meant to silence anybody. If it was meant to silence, why would we be sitting and spending hours listening to the BIPOC? We want to solve the problem. We are not adversaries. But you cannot conduct this kind of meeting if we do not have a safe atmosphere. It's like in a domestic violence home. You can't speak up, and that is my entire uh, request for your kind uh, support in this particular thing. Because we need to hold the meeting and we need to have a public business meeting. With that, I'm going to open it up for a voting, and I, I will not entertain any more discussion.
Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a comment.
Blassey, what is that you want?
I, I'm gonna make a comment because I'm, I'm quite frankly, I, I'm appalled that you would compare uh, the criticism that you've received as a, a board chair um, to domestic violence. I'm absolutely appalled.
Thank you.
And not saying it once, but now saying it twice. I'm, I'm just absolutely appalled.
All right. And I shared my perception. Go ahead, Director Leopold, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I mean, I do, I agree with the bullet, Director Blassey when she says, um, you know, I, I think it, I don't think yours is your intention at all, um, but, but I do think, um, we want to be careful, especially when you know, talking about like domestic violence victims to compare that to uh what we're going through, I think. Would could demean, could be viewed as demeaning uh domestic violence victims, and I know that wasn't your intention, but we do not, yeah, we don't want to do that, and so um, there's nothing more that needs to be said about that, I don't think. But with the, with the, with the policy, um, for me, I'm sorry, I just didn't get finished what I was saying, uh, with uh Paul, he, Paul, Mr. Decopoulos, said that um, the uh, the policy was uh not necessary be due to the board already being able to do that. And Director Hyun said that she did that in her term, as well as I've seen other board chairs do that. Um, so I don't, I don't view it as necessary. Um, and I also think, as Mr. Decopoulos pointed out, that there wasn't, at least in my perception, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I don't believe that there was a hundred percent clarity on whether board members could do a point of order or speak out. Um, if the board chair was doing that, and so because of those uncertainties and the subjectivity of the words uh civil and some of the other things in there, uh, I'm going to be no vote for this. I do think that it's important for us um, to be one board and one voice and um, to try our best to see the best in each other. And then also, um, if this does pass, um, I'm go, I think it's important for us to understand and enforce our ability to um, uh, allow community members to speak up because if a board chair is silencing people because they view things something not to be civil, uh, up to their perception, uh, that's something that we have, we would have to speak out against, and so we're gonna need some sort of checks and balances to that if, if this did pass. Uh, I'm going to be no vote because of the uncertainty uh and the fact that it's not legally necessary.
All right. Thank you. I think we've got enough discussion. Now let's start with the the motion is the amendment introduced by uh, Director, Vice Chair Battle. And Vice Chair Battle, do you mind reading the amendment of Mr. Decopoulos? Can you read the amendment exact wordings? Because it's a little bit morphed from the beginning.
Yes, I'm happy.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Vice Chair Battle, please.
The board chair can ask that the public comment be civil and need not accept comments that are obscene, derogatory, name-calling, racist, threatening, or direct criticism of named employees.
Thank you. And is there, and this was moved by Vice Chair Battle, seconded by Director Gos. And we'll take the votes now. Director Kylo, how do you vote?
No.
Okay, Director Gos?
On mute, Kathy.
I vote aye.
Uh, Director Lepold.
I vote no.
Director Blasi.
No.
Okay, Director Hyun.
Hi.
Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
We've covered everybody and I vote aye. One, two, three, four. So Vice Chair Satya Chandragiri, Vice Chair Bethel, Director Hyun and Director Goss vote aye. Director Blasi, Director Lepold and Director Kylo vote no. So the motion is passed as amended by Vice Chair Bethel. So thank you very much.
So now you're back, Board Chair Chandragiri, now you're back to the, you've just amended the original motion. So you'll have to go through the mechanics now voting on that original motion, which is now includes this new language that you've just approved in this amendment.
I think Director Goth already pulled her original motion, as I recall during the discussion in favor of Director or Vice Chair Bethel's amendment.
That's correct. She withdrew it.
So, Mr. Dacoplas, what do we?
We have not voted on my motion. I, can I withdraw it, Mr. Dacoplas?
Well, it sounds like you have withdrawn it. So as long as the board is, as long as the board is satisfied that the amendment, uh, now replaces the original motion and you voted on the amendment. Then you can proceed.
Well, so we are done?
Yes.
All right. So now we'll proceed with item number nine in here. Acceptance of grant. And then there is a slight modification in approval of personal action items. We have a small change to one date in the personal actions. And I will ask uh, our executive, uh, Director of Human Resources, Mr. John Byatt, if he would address that correction. Mr. Byatt.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We probably need a motion to accept not item nine, A and B before we do anything. And then John could present the question.
So we need a motion to accept A and B and then?
I make the motion. This is Danielle to accept A and B of the consent calendar.
Okay, is there anybody seconding that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Director Hyun seconds the the motion.
I want to pull nine B, but okay.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm getting confused in this procedural part. Director Kyler, do you mind explaining it to me?
Uh, we need, we need a motion before we can have John speak to whatever the changes.
Okay, fine.
But I I don't want to, I
Do that. And you don't need a first or a second. You just need one person to pull and then the rest of it.
Okay, so Director, so is there anybody to pull any of those items from consent calendar?
Nine B.
So Director Kylo says nine B to be pulled from the consent calendar. Now is there a motion to?
So moved.
Okay, Director Kylo moves it. Is there any second?
Danielle second.
Who's that?
Danielle for nine A.
Okay, Danielle seconds. Is there any discussion on that? So hearing none, can we vote on that? Director Kylo.
Aye.
Okay, Director Goss.
I don't think she heard you.
Director Goss, you have to unmute and vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Director Lepold.
Aye.
Thank you. Director Blasi.
Aye.
Director Hyun.
Hi.
Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
And I as vote aye. So the consent calendar nine A, acceptance of grants passes. Now we go to consent calendar nine B. Yes. We have a small change. And, uh, I'm going to ask Executive Director of Human Resources, Mr. John Byatt, if you would address that correction. And then we can introduce it. John Byatt, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Shonda Giri. I just wanted to draw the board's attention that there was a um, uh, error in one part of the personnel actions. Uh, Mr. Wolf's rehire date should read twenty twenty-two instead of twenty twenty-one. I just wanted to alert the board to that correction.
Thank you very much. Is that a motion to accept as corrected?
I will move that we accept that as long as we get to discuss it.
Well, you will get to discuss it. And is there anybody to second that?
Second.
Marty, Director Hyun second. And let's have a discussion on that.
Okay.
Okay, Director Kylo.
I would like to, I I would like to put on the record that I am, I was not surprised to see that Mike was retiring. I'm happy for Mike. And I am happier for us that he plans on sticking around for a while and not just leaving us.
I'd like to make a comment too.
Yes, Director Hyun.
Uh, Mike, you are an invaluable member of the district and I, I agree with Director Kyler, I'm glad you're sticking around for another year. Um, this district is really gonna hurt when you're gone. All the work you've done with bonds and everything else. You have such knowledge that I don't know how you're gonna impart that on somebody and maybe you need to do a Vulcan mind meld or something, but uh, you got a year to train somebody and I I just don't know how you're gonna do it. Anyway, you are very much appreciated.
Thank you. That is so kind of you. Any other comments and? Director Lepold, go ahead.
I mean, the other two board members said it well, so I don't need to repeat it. But thank you, Mike, for staying. And, uh, I'm looking forward to this this year with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other comments, uh, you want to add? Director Goss.
I I vote with with previous. I wouldn't like Mike. He's done a wonderful job.
Yeah.
I came to stay.
Yeah. Well, is there any other discussion then? I I am so glad that you're deciding to stay a year longer. Especially when our whole school and school district is going through all kinds of, uh, you know, uh, ups and downs and in the middle of all these things. So thank you. Thank you. Now, without any, uh, if there's no additional discussion. The motion is to approve the personal action item B as uh, with this modification introduced by Mr. John Byatt. So i- if this was moved by Director Kylo and seconded by Director Hyun. And shall we get ready to vote? And Director Kylo, how do you vote for this?
Aye.
Okay. Director Blasi.
Aye.
Okay, Director Goss.
Aye.
Director Lepold.
Aye.
Okay, Director Hyun.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bethel.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. With that, all of us, it passes unanimously. So thank you. Now let's go to item number ten. This is the first reading of Valley Inquiry Charter School Charter Renewal. So I'm going to turn this over to, uh, Dr. Sprouls.
Thank you, Dr. Chandragiri. And this is, um, our first reading for the Valley Inquiry Charter Agreement Renewal Process. Um, and it's largely a procedural process at this point. And so, um, if the, um, board can take a look at the process moving forward. And I do just want to recognize Principal Jesse Payne. He's been on this call um, for several hours now. And I, and I appreciate his leadership through this. And I assume that we will have some questions with him as we move forward. But right now, this is kind of just a procedural step that the board, um, Principal Payne wrote a letter, um, stating the intent of Valley, Valley Inquiry, or what we call VIX, um, to be able to renew their charter. Um, the board has forty-five days to set a public hearing. And in that public hearing, we're, we're hoping to have that in January, um, where the board could, um, give the approval or denial to begin the process to negotiate the agreement moving forward. Once the board, um, assumes that they give that their approval to do that, we would have ninety days to, um, engage in, in, uh, discussions with VIX, uh, about the agreement. And then at the end of that period or sometime within that period, we don't have to go all ninety days. But sometime within that ninety day period, we'd bring it back to the board, um, to be able to approve or deny the, um, agreements, um, as it is presented.
Dr. Sprouls, thank you very much. So today, all we have to do is to just know this was introduced today. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. And you'll, you'll have an opportunity to be able to ask, um, uh, Principal Payne questions and and talk about the agreement at further times.
Well, thank you very much. So there is, I don't need to go through any discussion on this, right?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay. So then, thank you very much. Then we'll go to item number eleven.
And Dr. Shandra Giri, our Chief Operations Officer, Mike Wolfe, who, uh, you all just, uh, sent nice vibes his way. I believe, uh, he will be presenting the executive limitation number seven.
All right, Mr. Wolf, go ahead. Thank you very much.
Mike, are you muted? It doesn't look like, uh, he's gonna be able to, uh,
All right. So if if that is the case, can we move this to the next meeting? Is there any timelines or some deadline that we are supposed to meet in this meeting, Dr. Sprouls?
No, I think we could move it to the next meeting and then we would just have two ELS at the next meeting to get us back on track.
Let's move it to the next meeting. This has gone on too long.
Okay.
All right. So the, is there anything, this is the next board meeting schedule, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, upcoming board meeting schedule. Is there any discussion we need to have on this or there is nothing? Director Kylo, is there any discussion that happens on this or it's just for information?
Just information.
All right. With that, I think we've covered item number eleven. Let's open it up for public comment, non-agenda items. This section of public comment is for items not necessarily related to the agenda. Half an hour will be designated for this section of public comment. Each person is allowed three minutes to address the board. Additional three minutes allowed for translation to English if needed. Please state your first and last name for the record.
Hey there.
Daniel, go ahead and, uh, please kindly help.
Yes, Eric, Shonda Gary, uh, board directors. Aaron, are we ready? I think we just got a few, uh, few callers and I think one video.
Yeah, we have one video and, um, five callers who signed up.
Okay.
All right. We'll start with the video that is easier. Or maybe we can get the callers first and then we can have the video. They can, I think they've been waiting so long.
We will.
And
Okay, looks like our first caller is Isaiah. Isaiah, please go ahead and unmute.
Did that work?
Yeah, Isaiah, go ahead. Thank you very much.
Cool. Isaiah Allen Swan, IA, Lan Elementary, Kaiser, Oregon. Uh, for any of the audience today that are new listeners, I expect that tonight's been kind of baffling. If you're confused by what you've heard thus far, please take an hour or so to listen to a few of the public comments segments of of the recent school board meetings. If you work for the district and have questions and don't have coworkers you feel comfortable discussing all this with, please don't hesitate to drop me a non-district account email. I'd love to direct you to more resources and context. I'm not creative poetry, so instead of a traditional poem, I have some of the collage of ideas, I guess, that I found edifying. It, uh, might get a little abstract. The only way to undo racism is to consistently identify it and describe it and then dismantle it. Dr. Eva Maxendi, hello, you're anti-racist. The only way to be anti-racist is to walk in the other direction. Christina Torres, Edweek. In the field of education, anti-racism often looks like school districts managing inequality and racism instead of eliminating them. Effectively, school districts declare that there are barriers that hinder students' educational growth and tend to be fine managing those inequalities with awards or courts committees and task forces. These actions will sound comprehensive and with time a solution to injustice. These reforms may even reduce police killings or school suspensions of black students. But a civil rights activist Ella Baker said, "A reduction of injustice is not the same as freedom." Reformers want incremental change, but lives are being lost if every day we wait. Regina L. Love, Edweek. People got a hint of her politics when she insulted Colin Kaepernick and then turned around and apologized. She was moving with the consensus, as she always had. She thought the social consensus was one thing and then realized it was something else. Matt Stoller. I don't need to be friendly with anyone who disagrees. I'm under no obligation to treat anyone who thinks another woman being deserves fewer rights than them with respect. If I, a seventeen-year-old high school student, can recognize that, why couldn't a woman nominated to the highest court in the nation? Because for Ginsburg, it doesn't really matter. It's important to recognize the privilege one has to be able to abandon their beliefs instead of, or has a French relationship. For everyday people, for you and me, these decisions matter. Their voices can be the difference between life and death. But for someone living among the wealthy elite, if they lose, so what? The next time you praise RBG's girl power, keep in mind how for decades she has excused Scalia's abysmal record. Remember how she maintained a close friendship with a man fighting against everything she claimed to believe in? No relationship is worth excusing bigotry, especially when there's a nation full of women and girls looking up to you. Ella Marsden, Drops of Ink, Libertyville High School. Also, please look up the names Ginsburg's track record on indigenous sovereignty. As we work to make this country anti-racist, this goal is only achievable if white people acknowledge their power and cede it for the humanity and rights of everyone, including themselves, by methodically tearing down racist policies and replacing those policies with one that values the lives of BIPOC individuals. If white people expect to accomplish real social change, they need to acknowledge their strength. Regina L. Love, Edweek. Our students and our BIPOC community understand that there is no anti-racism or equity in equivocating and compromise in negotiating just how many of their lives we should be allowed to destroy. Don't expect them to see your cowardice as anything other than exactly what it is. If you've had the privilege of being white or in power this summer, one hint. If you've invited the least of this conversation, you've already given up on them. Don't be surprised when our BIPOC students aren't interested in being expendable. And as always, Marty Hyun is a white supremacist, activist, presenter, and patriot's prayer. Justice Lippold is a trans folk who is associated with Proud Boys. Paul Kyle performed in blackface. Kathy Goss thinks SROs are worth their money, but preschool lunches are not. Daniel Bethan and Satya Chandragiri silenced constituents and collaborated with white supremacists for the advancement of political careers and their own egos. And district staff prominent in this meeting forcibly removed loose students from their own task force were expected to be treated as if their lives were worth protecting. Kylo, you are the definition of oppression. Go away. Satya, domestic violence? Seriously? How on earth do you ever acquire a medical license? Justice Lippold, say trans rights.
Right. Thank you very much. Aaron, who is our next caller?
Yeah, our next, our next caller is Elizabeth.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Swan, a past district employee and current community member. No honesty, no humility, no respect, no accountability, all fear and no imagination. Each week, you all say a little bit more of what you really think, but we already knew. We knew when you decided blackface was not a deal breaker. We knew when you decided it was okay to suggest we stop feeding our students to teach their parents a valuable lesson about finances. We knew when you rallied to end sanctuary status in our city. We knew when you defended the three presenters live on Zoom. We knew when you asked conservative flag lovers to testify for your agenda. We knew when you asked those same people to physically threaten our students at their events. We knew when you stood next to the Proud Boys. We knew when you choked on the tea in LGBTQIA. We knew when you had notes for Ibram X. Kendi. We knew when you reposted Andy Ngo. We knew when you told us how meaningless our testimonies are and ignored every single one to elect your chair. We knew when you had pushback for the statewide decision to make the new Confederate flag and Slaustica official hate symbols in our district. We knew when you wanted to make the colors blue and red equal to those hate symbols. We knew when you couldn't think for two seconds about the experiences of black students without saying, "But what about all students?" We knew when you were worried a shift in grading terminology would make your students seem less special because other students might succeed more. We knew when you threatened our students with imprisonment and loss of jobs for not conforming to your expectations. We knew when you said you'd only listen to students of color if they crammed into a poorly ventilated room in the middle of a pandemic. We knew when you insisted these conversations be confidential behind closed doors in private. We knew when you admitted none of this would be happening if not for loose, but you decided to finish the process without them at their expense anyways. We knew, we knew, we know. We know every time you say "all students" that it's students of color whose health and safety you're compromising. No assumptions, just patterns. You insult us to think you can fool us into believing otherwise. You ask us to let you learn, you've had at minimum six months, though we know you've been ignoring these loose students for years. You aren't learning. It says a lot about you that you spend more time researching how other school boards control their constituents than researching how schools could be improved for students of color. It says a lot about you that when you do research the school-to-prison pipeline, you listen more to cops than you do to incarcerated youth and adults. No assumptions. You don't want to fix our school system for our students. You want to fix our students for the system. No imagination. SROs out. Figure it out.
All right, Erin, who is our next caller?
Let's see, so we currently have no more callers waiting who've signed up for non-agenda, but there are people waiting who have signed up for agenda calls.
All right, we have set aside half an hour. Why don't we get them to call in since they have been waiting? I think we should, please.
Okay. So our next caller is Alondra. And Alondra, if you could go ahead and mute. And I'll get someone else in here as well.
Alondra?
My name is Alondra, but, uh, let me start it off. So, hey, my name is Alondra. I'm a student at the Salem Kaiser School District. I just want to clarify, um, yeah, I just want to clarify something that you guys, I can't remember who mentioned it earlier, but, um, that I actually got kicked out of the student task force and it was actually not an equitable process. It was really, it was very flawed, infiltrated process that was led by this district in order to silence the experience of BIPOC students that are actually affected by the school-to-prison pipeline. I'm here today because I believe that the district must put an end to all police presence in schools. This is my timeline, June ninth of twenty twenty. The toxic stress my peers and I have felt in the Salem Kaiser School District because of the constant policing is no secret. The harassment that I have felt during the school year is that the hands of security guards or teaching staff caused me to be here today. The hypercriminalization we face has been constantly ignored by you and us, and this has cost youth their lives. Police around the country and local police have shown their true colors. We will no longer stand to support the systems that kill black and brown people and push us to the margins. It is time you guys to take responsibility and accountability for the harm you have caused our communities. June twenty-third of twenty twenty, we are the ones that had to experience all the toxic stress at school. You are privileged enough to not go through it. You laugh at your friend Paul Kyler being racist and doing the blackface, which he should immediately resign for. This is completely unacceptable. Shame on all of you. Sharon Glossy asks, "What would make us feel safe returning to school?" And I can tell you that students of color will not feel safe returning to schools with SROs and a racist school board. I am calling all of you right now again. We want to see direct action. We want real change. July first of twenty twenty, we do not need an advisory committee because this will just slow down the process. We need SROs out of schools now. You all received hundreds of emails, calls, and videos of community members being dragged and telling you what the problem is, but y'all just ignore the urgent demands of students of color. September first, the type of people we have in our school boards, there's white supremacists, people who are anti-immigrants. The whole school board is corrupt. This is my poem named "White Supremacy" in the SKSD. It is now the end of the year and we are still here. Calling out your racism with all my peers. There's a lot of PLC in the juvenile system, suffering in cages without food, while you sit comfortably in your swim rooms or driving your Benz. Cops take out a youth in the classrooms and straight into the school-to-prison pipeline. Cops have proven that they are here to protect students of color. How many times do we have to suffer? And I want to say something lastly. Don't thank us for creating the process. Honor us by taking SROs out.
We have another caller, Erin?
Yep. So our next caller is Bethany.
Bethany, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Bethany Lowberg, and I currently serve as Youth Ministries Leader at Salem Mononite Church with youth who attend schools in the Salem Kaiser School District. Our most recent youth gathering reflected on the theme "Worthy of Love" with the affirmation that each and every one of us is worthy of love. One of several questions we reflected on is how students are shown that they are worthy or not worthy in school, which led to a deep conversation about equity. I'll share a couple poems that include some of the questions and experiences that students shared. What does comprehensive distance learning mean for students with no internet access? For the student who has their own room with a desk and a door they can shut? For the student who has only shared spaces and little control over background noise? For the teacher trying to meet the needs of students? In each of these situations and many more? For the teacher with students already struggling? For the teacher with the majority of their class failing? What does white supremacy look like, sound like, feel like? One form of white supremacy is when teachers expect students to act right, awesome, without even realizing it. This sounds like the teacher who repeatedly affirms the answer of the Latino student who speaks English with no accent and repeatedly responds with, "Okay, maybe, or I suppose," to the Latino student who speaks English with an accent. The only two Latinx students in the otherwise all-white AP classroom. The one student keeps waiting for the other student to receive words of affirmation that never come. White supremacy looks like a teaching staff in school board that does not reflect the diversity of the student body. Looks like a school board member posting a Facebook message that says, "Build the wall", and communicates, "We don't want you here." It looks like school board members accepting funds from organizations that promote policies and messages that harm students of color. These realities are part of our present community story. Students breaking silence have named these realities so their story together doesn't end here, so that we can reimagine safety and well-being centering their voices. In the speech, the transformation of silence into language and action, of the Lord, who describes himself as a black woman warrior poet, says, "My daughter said, 'Tell them about how you're never really a whole person if you remain silent,' because there's always that one little piece of you that wants to be spoken out. And if you keep ignoring it, it gets madder and madder and hotter and hotter. And if you don't speak it out one day, it will just up and punch you in the mouth from the inside." Lord closes saying, "There's not difference, which immobilizes us, but silence, and there are so many silences to be broken." Thank you.
Thank you. Erin, who is our next caller?
Our next caller is Sandra.
Sandra, go ahead, Sandra.
My name is Sandra, and I'm a resident of Salem. Today, I want to honor my testimony or my comment to all the students who have been organizing and advocating tirelessly in the community for better schools, for police-free schools. Students who represent themselves, their ancestors, and their peers, and their future siblings or children. Last night, I had a dream of Ketse Cold. It spoke to me and it told me of the knowledge that was buried in these lands. The knowledge hidden under your so-called buildings of knowledge. Buildings brought up through bloodshed and oppression. Buildings of knowledge called Salem Kaiser School District, where black and brown children get told they aren't smart enough if they don't pass an ultra-right-wing colonial class on history. Ketse Cold told me that there would be no peace until there is justice. There will be no peace until there is justice. There will be no peace until there is justice. There will be no peace until there is no police. There will be no peace until there is no police. There will be no peace until there is no police walking down the halls of our schools. And if our schools were getting our students ready for education rather than for prison walls, there will be no peace until white supremacists, I mean, the three percenters, are off or out of our school board. There will be no peace until racist, classic xenophobes, uplifters of colonialism are off of our school board, out of leadership, and out of these buildings of knowledge. Ketse Cold told me that in these buildings of knowledge, safety is only for those who colonize the land. Safety is only for those who fear a black and brown skin. Safety is only for those who live in the hills. Safety is only for Daniel Bethel, who refuses to show up to a candidate forum because she fears brown youth. Safety is not for black and brown youth who are handcuffed within their prisons, I mean, school halls. And when an oppressed person says that they agree with having police, Ketse Cold tells me that our leaders will tokenize them to push their white supremacist agenda. You can play your bureaucracy, you can play your tokenism, you can play with a task force and your board, but every time you try to fool and ignore us, we will bang on your windows and write on your walls. Ketse Cold writes with us and yells, "No justice, no peace. No peace for our school board until there is no more police."
Thank you, Sandra. Erin, who is our next caller?
Yep, we have Tony.
Tony, go ahead.
They say that the prison pipeline don't exist. I'm the living proof that it does exist. I see more cops in jail cells than school books. It hurts when I reminisce. They treated me like a criminal, but I was just a kid. They silenced me, put me in handcuffs, but what do they know about the pipeline? What their conservative views? All they do is uplift white supremacy. The Salem Kaiser School Board don't know me. They want to silence me and my peers for expressing their tears. Salem School Board reminds you of overseers. Marty Hame supports building the wall. Paul Kyler did blackface. Kathy Goss is anti-poverty. We need a attendee, a superintendent that knows about racism. There's a person of color that's a sellout on the board. They don't represent me. I see pictures of them with OFER. Do you know what that is? OFER is a right-wing organization that puts kids in cages. If you didn't know, he was an immigrant himself, you see? He don't represent me or my community. Without unity, there is no community. When you, when a kid is in oppression, he gets used to it. For example, when a kid goes to school and all he experiences were thrown suspensions in his mind, he's getting taught that he's a criminal. But once the revolution chooses him and opens up, he is the chosen one to change. He's the one telling y'all to change, that we need SROs out of school.
All right, Erin, who is our next caller?
We'll go to Colin. Colin, please go ahead and unmute.
Colin, will you please share your first and last name and place?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Hi, my name is Colin. I'm a PhD candidate in education, a member of the community, and a fellow educator, and I'm on occupied Kalapuyia land. I would like to first give a round of applause for the brilliant youth putting their cultural literacies on display and sharing their testimonios through poetry. To the board, I know you love your data sources. Your section earlier on key performance indicators made that very clear. I know you like the data. As a matter of fact, I got my backpack packed full of numbers and stats. If you're brown or black, school doesn't want you back. So the schools look cops, SROs on attack. Excelent suspense, but say equity lens while you drive a Benz. It's like it's all pretend. But your tactics are tacit. From a student task list, try to quiet and mask it. The community's gaslit. Tonight, Satya seeks to censor the students, centering whiteness cloaked in politeness. His highness has the final word? Absurd. So quickly addressing what Paul asked earlier. What was that? That was offensive. Paul, you have no place on a school board. Marty, you are centering individualism and refusing to acknowledge the factors and systems that negatively affect students. How can you support students if you are that unaware? Satya, terrible. Thank you, Director Glossy, for being the one person to speak up. I'm calling today to urge you to reimagine school discipline. Eton presented earlier on what students would like to see if police presence is necessary. Unfortunately, he did not discuss any of the student input on whether or not they are necessary in schools, and he refused to mention why loose youth were excluded from that space. On reimagining school discipline. Page eight of today's agenda has a section on reimagining school discipline. Putting police in schools is reinforcing the carceral approach in which our youth are always surveilled, even at school. Your language talks about creating a safe and welcoming space. Police presence runs contrary to your goals. Removing SROs is an immediate action that you can take to respond to an urgent need in the community and begin the process of ending the school-to-prison pipeline. You can do this. School districts around the country have done it, so do it. On the board censoring students. Shame on the board for censoring public comment. Rather than taking action to change the conditions that are negatively affecting our students, you prioritize your own comfort and safety. You aren't listening to the youth or the families you supposedly serve. You are silencing them. Shame on you. Satya, the so-called revision of language and board governance policy eleven makes you all look very bad. Ms. Perry earlier said that you need to get more student and family voices. You are not listening to the concerns of the public, you are policing their language. You want to talk about vitriol? How about build that wall? Satya, you thanked Donald for his service to the country. Apparently, his vitriolic hate speech is not an issue for you. But when students in your schools share their thoughts, that's crossing the line. Do something.
All right, thank you. Erin, who is our next caller?
Our next caller is Emily, and Emily, you are already unmuted, so.
Emily, will you please share your first and last name and place? And then go ahead.
Yes, my name is Emily Adela Lowberg. I am a resident of the northeast neighboring area of Salem and an alumna of North Salem High School. I have written a poem for my testimony today. It is called "Villanelle in Response to Agenda Item 6A: Student Safety and Well-Being Summit and Reimagining School Discipline." If you want student safety and well-being today, know that police bring only fear. Listen to what your students say. Student resource officers get in the way. Their presence must be removed from here if you want student safety and well-being today. The bias in the system is on full display. SROs target students of color disproportionately, it's clear. Listen to what your students say. The threatening presence of police in the hallway must be something you end this year if you want student safety and well-being. if you want student safety and well-being today. When you force students on oversight committees to sign confidentiality agreements to stay, you're silencing voices that you need to hear. Listen to what your students say. As you continue to allow these programs to stay, the harms you inflict are harsh and severe. If you want student safety and well-being today, listen to what your students say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowberg. Aaron, who is our next caller, please?
Yeah, next caller is Linda. Linda, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Linda Hamilton. Are you there?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Linda. Go ahead, Linda.
Okay. I'm Linda Hamilton. I'm a board member-at-large for Lain E S D. I'm also on the OSBA Board of Directors. And I'm here tonight because I'm a student, graduate student from McKay High School. And I'm here to speak on the OSBA Board of Director. I'm also an OSBA Board of Director. And I'm here to speak to the Board of Salem Kaiser Board in support of Jesse being on the OSBA Board. Jesse Lapold. I have watched Jesse interact and support students. And I think he has the students' perspectives at heart. I've seen him engage with even students at McKay High School, which is the school I graduated from. I'm in Eugene now. I'm an alumni from the University of Oregon, and I got involved with the school board due to the school-to-prison pipeline as a parole information officer. I think he would bring great student perspective to the OSBA Board. And I ask that the Salem Kaiser School Board stand in unity and support your school board member for this seat. He would bring a lot to the board around students due to his interactions with the students. And I'm sure by me seeing some of his interaction with the students, he understands some of the walks of life that our young students face today in the schools. So I ask that you please stand in unity and support Jesse for the OSBA Board of Directors.
Ms. Hamilton, thank you very much. And so nice of you to come all the way. You and I are in the Legislative and Policy Committee and the Color Caucus of OSBA. So thank you for joining us. So nice to hear from you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you guys all on that board for your service.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
I don't think our board could stand this meeting this long. Thank you. I appreciate your service and your time.
Thank you, ma'am. We have one more caller, I believe, right?
We can go to the next caller. So we have Francis, I believe.
Francis, go ahead. Give us your first and last name and share.
Just waiting for Francis to unmute here.
Francis, you have to unmute, please.
See, if you like, I can go to another caller.
Yes, please.
Okay. So we have Angelique.
Angelique, go ahead. Give us your first and last name and place and then share with us.
And it looks like Francis just unmuted too, so.
Hi, can you hear me?
So who is this now? Angelique or Francis?
This is Angelique.
Okay, Francis, you'll have to wait. We'll hear from Angelique and then we'll go to you, please. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Angelique, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Angelique Crater, and I'm a recent graduate from the Salem Kaiser School District. And I'm just testifying today to continue the petition to remove SROs from school because as you've seen from this meeting today, no action is being taken and children are still being targeted by SROs in the community. And I'm here to stand with loose on their petition to remove SROs. So I wrote a poem for my testimony like some other loose members.
Please share with us, please.
So, we were told that we would have a decision by late August, but it's now December and nothing has changed. Kids are being arrested by cops because you hate their brown skin, because they don't fit into your idea of a student, because you don't think that they can do this. The Salem Kaiser School Board does not think that black, indigenous, students of color should have the ability to succeed in this district, or should we say, this prison. This prison where youth come to prepare for adulthood, where they expect to be taught biology, mathematics, finances, English, yet are instead met with handcuffs and failing grades that they cannot control. You know, the school board thinks that children of color learn these things better behind bars. Marty Haynes, Satya, Paul, Daniel Bethel, Kathy Goss, Jesse Lipold, Kristy Perry, they have all have scars on kids who should have grown up to be community leaders, but instead, they intentionally place them in a concrete box with a metal bed, left alone with their own thoughts, constantly rethinking how it was their fault for being in that situation. The reality is that they lock them away from the rest of society. They fear the power of BiPOC resilience, resistance. They fear the knowledge that has been blossoming into trees for decades, the knowledge that school resource officers, otherwise known as SROs, are physically hurting them, preventing them from reaching a college degree, leaving them helpless in poverty, just like the generation before them, just like the generation after them, because they don't think they can do this. I've watched my peers, these youth, come here every single month. They stand up on the podium, or they wait for their name to be announced on the call, reliving their trauma so that you can understand, finally, that they are hurting, that you have hurt them. Yet every single time, I watch your eyes, your posture, your focus, and realize that you don't care, that this is what you want. We see you every time you look away from whoever is speaking. When you glance down at your phone, turn your camera off, interrupt testimonies of personal experience so that you have no obligation to feel any emotion, so that you don't have to look at them and tell them what you're really thinking. That the system was designed like this, that you want to keep the system this way, that you simultaneously, paradoxically, believe that their struggle to survive here in this school district does not exist. The Salem Kaiser School Board does not think that black, indigenous, students of color should have the ability to succeed in this district. They think that school is synonymous with juvenile detention, county jail, deportation, and even a lifetime spent in prison. They support the pipeline of youth being placed on this path. They do not care about the well-being of youth unless they are white, affluent, have no behavioral challenges or mental health issues. They do not care about the well-being of youth unless they do not attend schools in predominantly low-income BiPOC neighborhoods. They do not care about the well-being of youth unless they do not go to McKay, North, or Roberts. I'm here to ask the same thing that I've asked over ten, maybe even twenty times in my peers. Remove SROs from the Salem Kaiser School District. Your lack of action is complacency in the oppression of BiPOC youth. You claim to be anti-racist, but it appears that you don't know what those words mean. Arresting BiPOC youth on a regular basis is not anti-racist. You are contributing to, you are a member of, you are a supporter of the institution of racism itself. Remove SROs from the Salem Kaiser School District. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Francis will be our last caller. After that, we have to move to the next item. So go ahead, Francis.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, please. Thank you. Please state your first and last name and sorry that you had to wait so long.
Oh, it's okay. My name is Frances Loop.
I am a, I live in Salem, and I'm the mother of three North Salem High School graduates. I wanted to comment on the reimagining school discipline and to encourage all of you to really think outside of the box of our punitive status quo in school discipline and really, really grab hold of the restorative approach, which I don't believe SROs are the best trained to follow through on. With that, I just want to read you a poem from Hafiz, written in the thirteen hundreds, and it is titled "Dropping Keys." "The small man builds cages for everyone he knows, while the sage, who has to duck his head when the moon is low, keeps dropping keys all night long for the beautiful, rowdy prisoners." Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think with that, we are going to go to the next item, and so thank you. Okay, so we have to get to the next item because we have Dr. Sprouls reporting. A few board members have expressed a desire to share a brief report. So we'll quickly go to board report, and if you can just kindly add one quick statement. So we'll start with Director Lapold, who wanted to share something.
Sure. I just wanted to give a quick update and on the student advisory thing. The application section timeline so far, I'll send you guys a draft by the time I'm done. But right now, we have it as December seventeenth as information given and getting out to students in regard to it. January four this year, January fourth being the due date for applications by five PM to Alice from our students that are on the Equity Committee. Just keep that in mind. January fifth and sixth is when they're going to be reviewed. And then, of course, seventh, they're going to be notified. And then on our boarding, January twelfth. I mean, of course, this is all subject to board approval. On the school board meeting of January twelfth would be the day when we could do it. And basically, I'll send you guys with the draft of what it looks like. But it's essentially our Budget Committee process. It's very similar. Kids just fill out an application, which is tailored to students, not Budget Committee. They can attach a resume, and then they get the experience of speaking to us for one to two minutes on what they hope to, or why they hope to serve. And so that's just one thing. And then, of course, I tutor students through Belamet. And one problem that we've been having is a lot of students aren't coming or showing up. And I think that might be because a lot of students don't know. And I've heard this from other places around the community for their tutoring services that have been being offered. And so I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. So if you know of any parents who have kids that are struggling, I think it's important that we get them into contact with some of these places. That's all.
Thank you, Director Lapold. Anybody else want to share a few things?
I do.
Director Kylo, thank you, please.
One item. I don't know if you can see it.
What is that, walk?
Walk and roll. This is the official mask of the Safe Roots to Schools program, which we have been working with. In fact, the Salem Kaiser School District, between Marion County and the city, we received six of the seventeen grants given to improve safe routes to schools for the coming year. So we did well. So I wanted to share that. And that's been on the SCATS agenda for two years. So somebody will get to take my place there in July.
Okay, anybody else have anything else? You know? Director Blasi, do you have anything to share?
It's just real quick. The Mid Valley COG is coming probably to near the end of their recruitment process for a new executive director. And I know it's been a long process, but a very thorough. And they've narrowed down to some finalists. And so I'm sure the final timeline, but they are getting close to identifying a new executive director for the COG.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Bethel or Director Hyen?
I just quickly would like to remind everybody that it's been a really incredibly difficult year for all of our families, and that includes our families who experience homelessness, specifically our youth who are homeless and without parents. So if you have time and/or donations that you could provide to Taylor's House or the Host Program, that would be awesome. If you have food boxes that you can recruit and drop off to the Host Program, they're always a need to serve our students who are experiencing homelessness, especially during the winter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Hyen, do you have?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I attended the McKay Booster Meeting, and they're trying to figure things out when they don't really run a concession right now, I don't believe. Anyway, parents are upset that their kids aren't in sports. They really need that sports.
Yeah, thank you. Director Goss? You have to unmute yourself, Director Goss.
I don't know why I seem to have so much trouble with that, but I'd like to remind everybody that it isn't just homeless students. I have lots of empathy for them, and we have lots, and they are having trouble. And we need to help there, but we also need to help that twenty to thirty age, thirty-year-old age person that has not been able to get a job, has not been able to get funds out of the state of Oregon. The Employment Department is an absolute disaster. And talking to people that age, they've called daily and said until calling, until they've been disconnected because it's been too long a call, which I think happens around an hour. And we have a real problem. And it isn't all school district. A lot of it is our employment problem. Those families have no place to go. They're in the food bank if they have anything left there. So there are lots of problems in our city right now. And I just wanted to bring that one into focus with people.
Thank you, Director Goss. I really want to say thank you very much. You know, as we're coming to the end of this year, I want to say it's been a blessing to work with all of you. It's been tough one year. And the last six months have been very difficult, but in all of you, I saw something beautiful. And you're great. And, you know, one thing has become very, very clear. Everybody has the same purpose of making sure. Even I see compassion in all of you and the kindness and willingness to sacrifice and willingness to serve. Make no mistake, there's no other way I look at it, you know? Even though some of the discussions may go here and there, but not one person has any other idea other than that. So I feel it's a blessing. We have had tough discussion. We have had courageous discussion. We discussed topics from trauma-informed, social justice, racial trauma, and so many different topics. In the process, you know, I've learned and grown, to be honest. It has completely changed me from, if you had asked me who I was last year and this year, it's totally different. And you've all been wonderful teachers for me. So I think in this process, we are all coming out okay, and it's going to be fine. So, and I really, Superintendent Perry, Dr. Sprouls, Dr. Udo Sinata, and Mike Wolf, and all the leadership team have done an amazing job. Nobody said dismantling all these inequities is going to be easy. It's going to be a messy job. It may feel hopeless sometimes. We may feel that we are not seeing the results. But, you know, this is the starting. It's like doing a surgery. You're going to go layer by layer. And I have full confidence we have amazing leaders in the district, and they're going to take it through. We need to be patient. We need to keep letting the process go. If we hurry up, we will lose the thing. So with that said, Dr. Sprouls, you've been patiently waiting to represent. Doctor, Superintendent Perry, go ahead.
Thank you, and I'll make this super quick. And I just wanted to comment on it because one of our callers, who's a staff member, commented on it as well. Because when we talk about this work within the district, Kristy several times has mentioned the relationship between Justice Ginsburg and Justice Scalia as a relationship of two people who had very ideological battles, very open public battles, but who were able to see each other as people through the process and be able to engage in listening and truly listen. I do want to applaud a lot of the student testimony we heard tonight with the use of poetry and narrative word to be able to express their feelings and to truly hear those feelings. I think it forces us to engage in deeper listening than what we're used to at times. So as we start with the reimagining school discipline work and the safety summit, we're going to ask our community to bring an open heart and a we're going to ask our community to bring an open heart and an open mind and to be able to start really seeing each other as people through this process. People who, we all have our opinions, we all have our perspectives as we bring to it. But I think the model of Ginsburg and Scalia, separate from all of the public comments that they've made and all the decisions that they made, I think their model of their relationship is something that we can keep in mind, that there are relationships that are forged within this that we need to keep at the forefront. So that was the only thing. Just a quick word that it's going to require us to really hang in there as we engage in this process and to deeply listen to our kids and deeply listen to our community.
So, thank you, Dr. Sprouse. The time is ten thirty-one, and the meeting is adjourned. Be well, be safe, and have a nice holiday after this.